Meeting is now called to order. Please answer with the final. Afternoon, this meeting has been given in accordance with the Old and Public Meeting Act pursuant to Public Law 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and Trentonian newspapers, posted on the First of August, Golden Horn City Hall, and filed in the City Clerk's Office, and posted on the City of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Please all remain muted. I will now take roll call. Yes. Vice President Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Present.
Councilwoman Figueroa.
Present.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Present.
Councilman Harrison, I believe is in room, is that correct? Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Williams.
Present and presented.
Council President Gonzalez.
Presenting.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, municipal clerk, is present. Mr. Edward Kaloge, Legislative Council. And Mr. Wesley Bridges, City Attorney. Thank you. And Madam President, at this time, as I, if you'd like, I'll read the invocation.
Yes, please.
Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
And at this time, Madam President, as I understand, you have a recognition that you would like to?
Yes, however, he running behind schedule because the soccer game just ended at Trenton High, so if we can move to the first presentation and then he needs about 10, 15 minutes, so by that time we can start our first presentation.
Our sole presentation, the number one, is the DVR PC Road Safety Project from Mulberry Street, North Clinton Avenue.
Yes.
They are present here.
Yes.
Right ahead. And Madam President, just to make sure, as I understand, they have 10 minutes for the presentations, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jen Harris and I'm with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. And I'm here with Chris Tuma from East Trenton Collaborative. Together with our partners at Midnight Elementary School, the City of Trenton Public Works, and Greater Mercer TMA, we have been working on Inspired and Safe Streets, which is a community-driven project focused on making it safer for everyone to walk, bike, drive, take transit in the East Trenton neighborhood. And just for a little history of this work, this work is grounded in the traffic safety issues that East Trenton residents identified in their road safety audit that they did. And they noted different concerns like speeding cars, illegal parking, people feeling unsafe biking and passing the street. So for the past three years, our group has been turning these concerns into on-the-ground interventions, using quick build tools like paint, signs, flexible materials to make the streets safer. And the next phase of this work, which we've called Slow the Curve, focuses on Mulberry Street and North Clinton Avenue between Route 1 and Lawrence, with a specific focus on the sharp curve around St. Joe's. And just a little background about the project, it's fully community-funded through grants. And the goals of this project and the intended benefits are to improve safety for all road users, calm traffic, slow speeds, and improve connections to different community destinations. So here is how the design improves safety. The current parking lanes, which is shown in the top image, are pretty narrow. They range from six and a half to seven feet, which is narrower than this standard, which causes frequent side swipes, and many residents have said that they avoid parking there because they feel it's unsafe to park there. So this new design replaces those unsafe parking areas with protected bike lanes, which are separated by reflective parking stops and flexible barriers, as well as a painted buffer. And this is important because even though this is a bike lane, this is not just a bike project, this is a tool that we're using to calm traffic. Protected bike lanes are a proven safety countermeasure and are known to reduce bike crashes by over 50% and all crashes, including car crashes, by nearly 30%. We also know that over 100 people bike on this road already, using different traffic counts that we've done. And also a third of the neighborhood households don't own a car. And so this upgrade directly improves everybody's safety and mobility. And here is just another image of the different materials that we plan to use for this project, the vertical delineators, parking stops, and the painted buffer. And knowing that the curb is of particular concern for the residents of the neighborhood, we also propose adding some curb-specific safety measures like reflective Chevron signs and these reflective grids to make the curb more visible at night, as well as adding the painted slow markings on the road and the transverse rumble strips to indicate to drivers that they should slow down as they approach the curb. So next, I'll turn it over to Kurt.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Council President and Vice President, Council members for allowing us to present this evening. I'm talking a little bit about some of the outreach that we've already done and what some of our potential next steps will be. We've done an extensive bit of outreach already, and it's also, I think, important to note that this project has come directly as a response to community and resident complaints about the area around Mulberry Street, specifically the curb of Mulberry Street, and also just the street in general, and how dangerous it is traffic safety-wise. We have gone out and visited all 20 homes and six businesses on the corridor, on Mulberry Street and North Clinton Ave. And while we were out, we shared flyers that were in both English and Spanish, and they're just copies of flyers that you have on the slide there. They had a little bit of information about the project in general, and then specifically about what we are proposing to do. And we also presented the project to the resident-led East Trenton Collaborative Traffic Safety Community Organizing Committee, which for those of you who don't know, they're a resident-led group that really guides the traffic safety work that we do at the East Trenton Collaborative. I know I saw or heard at least one of them on the call, so shout out to all of the traffic safety committee members if you're on, listening to this. All right, is that all right? Some additional, or sorry, getting into like the feedback that we received while you're out there, it was overwhelmingly positive overall. Most residents were supportive about the project and about the traffic safety improvements. As we stated before, many residents are already not parking on the street because it's not safe, even in areas where there is legal street parking. We spoke to multiple residents that either had their own vehicles struck while they were parked, or had neighbors whose vehicles were struck, so they're already utilizing the side streets largely for parking, or they're utilizing off-street parking. And the businesses overall were in favor of the improvements as well. Most were not concerned with any potential impacts on parking because for them, for their customers, it's the same issues that residents face, and that customers don't utilize a lot of the, even the legal street parking on Mulberry Street in particular, because it's just very unsafe. There was only one business that did express some concern about the impacts, but they do currently have some off-street parking, and a lot of the parking that they are using currently is not legally permitted and tends to be a nuisance for the surrounding community as it is. And we also want to highlight that this project is included and aligns with the larger City of Trenton's recently adopted bike plan, so it's kind of a two-for-one where we're going to add some traffic calming measures to Mulberry Street and North Clinton Ave, and also helping to add some bike infrastructure in the City of Trenton. All right, I'm gonna talk a little bit more specifically about parking, since we know that I'm sure will be a major question. As we previously stated, we don't anticipate there being major impacts on parking in the area. In that picture, I think you all should have a copy too, if you can't see it here, but much of the parking on this stretch is already not legal parking, it is restricted under city and state code, which is indicated in the orange highlighted areas on that image. And even the parking that is legal, you can see the biggest stretch is in the portion of Mulberry Street across from Assomink Creek, and there are no longer any residential or private copies there, so basically no one ever parks there, for the most part. And removing these spaces, we don't think will have a major impact, because as stated before, even in areas where there is legal parking, residents and customers who patronize the businesses aren't parking there because it is quite dangerous. So our ask to you this evening is to consider this presentation. The ordinance will be for a road parking anytime rule on Mulberry Street and North Clinton Ave from Route 1 to Orange Street. That, we believe, will be on the October 21st agenda. And as Jen stated, we do have grant funding in place to make these improvements, but we won't be able to do that if we can't get approval from City Council. All right, some of our next steps for this project, we are hosting another community engagement event to try to get additional feedback from residents in the area. That will be on Saturday, October 18th, from 12 to 3 p.m. It will be in the area right around the curb on Mulberry Street and St. Joe's Ave, in that grassy area over there. And then again, the ordinance should be introduced in City Council on October 21st, and ending City Council's vote on November 6th. We hope to be able to start installing these improvements in early November. So thank you again for allowing us to present this evening, and at this point we can, I believe, we can take any questions if I have.
Yes, so I'm going to open it up to council, but I just want to commend you all and thank you for all of the work that you continue to do. You are one of the, one of the civic organizations who continue to engage consistently with those residents in that area, and you bringing this forth with solutions, not just coming to ask for something, and then also securing the funding. So I just want to say thank you for putting in the work and actually going in and talking to the residents to make this happen before coming before council, so I want to, I appreciate that. I know we may have a question. I want to open up Councilwoman Frisbee.
So, thank you, Madam President. I want to thank you, Council President, to post up exactly what I was going to say. A lot of folks come and they have issues, but they will come with a solution. And I'm grateful that you came out and with a solution, but the funding, that's really important that you did that. I also want to acknowledge the fact that you have included the neighborhood. A lot of people want to come in and they want to tell us exactly what we need in our community, as opposed to asking us and allowing us to give our feedback, our input, and to do follow-up. So I like that. The only thing that I would ask along with this is, I love how you have the markers and you have even given an extension so that there's a buffer in between the cars and the bikes. I would like to see that also if possible. As you go down, we just showed the yellow markers, the curves, safety measures, the reflection, the reflectors. I think that's your page, I'm not sure what your page, it's page 7. It would be great if we had those little poles still in there, and I say it only because we know that there are people who take curves hard, and if a biker is in there, they don't see that curve until, will see the biker until late, it could be something that becomes tragic. So I love everything else outside of that. I love the buffers, I believe these are, it looks like rumble strips that you also have to make sure that folks are slowing down, but I am, I like what you've done, I appreciate your coming in, and again, I love that you visited all 26 homes and businesses on that corridor as well to make sure that you got feedback and that you're giving dates for, that you're giving dates for all of it, when we're, we do what you need, when we're going to vote, so on and so forth. So I like, I appreciate your diligence in all this, and of course, in your tears and dotting your eyes. Thank you.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you for coming before us tonight. Certainly, the East Trenton Collaborative does not disappoint again, and thank you for your diligence and your hard work. Y'all have been at this for a long time, looking to revitalize your area and make things happen. And as Council President said, you are one of those associations that does the footwork, boots on the ground to make it happen, and thank you. You have your various communities, your committees and everything, you're all about your business, and we love it very, very much. I like the fact that you said it's included in the bike plan, so I guess you deal with Wills Kinsey a lot, very good to know that he's a part of what's going on, and of course, you spoke to Mr. Santora, who said that this is A-OK to go. I think it's great. Thank you for everything that you do and for continuously looking to improve the area and for caring about where you are and the other people that are around. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vice President, Councilwoman President.
I was going to say, you started with Councilwoman Williams, but thank you. I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues and commend you on your efforts to create safe passage and bike routes and everything for pedestrians and residents of the East Ward, or, no, it's North Ward, East Trenton. Always trips me up. I only have one concern, which you did touch on a little bit earlier, are the residents that are along Mulberry Street that do park on both sides of the street right there, but they're just like between, what is that, Clag and Bruning? There's a, there's a stretch of houses over there on one of the screens you showed. So there's about a cluster of eight to 10 houses. There are, a few cars are around that number that park right there. Are there any alternative solutions for them to park elsewhere if you're going to eliminate the parking?
So I can tell you, right now, when we went out there, we only spoke to one person in that direct area, and she did say that some residents utilize the parking in the evenings, but most of them have started using the side street parking, so a lot of them will park on the side streets, on Clag, on Bruning. Some of them are parking across the street on Clag and Bruning as well, so a lot of them are already doing that because their vehicles or the neighbors' vehicles have gotten, have gone in already. So I'd say that's the primary alternative now, I think, that we've found that residents are already using there.
Okay, all right. And you say you only talked to one of them in that?
In that small stretch, yes.
Okay, okay. I would like to see more feedback from those residents right there. There are a lot of renters, so they're pretty transient, so it may be hard to reach them, but if we can get a better consensus of those residents at least, so that they're aware that this is coming and a bike is moving through, so that they know, you know, and it's not frustrating to them to have to find a parking elsewhere. Some people really do like to park right in front of their house, but I think, you know, they may not give you too much pushback because of the dangers of the area. It is a very tight space, and it's a lot of truck traffic and a lot of speeding. I go that way a lot, so again, I would not park there if I was a resident, but we have to make sure everybody is being concerned.
Yeah, we do plan on going out again to flyer before our, and then hopefully we're able to speak to some more residents in that area on the 18th and get them to receive that.
Last question, do you have any petitions signed by anyone in the area?
So this didn't, because we work very closely with the Department of Public Works and Anthony Santora on this, to our knowledge, and I think his knowledge does require petition signatures for it.
I would definitely ask for a second opinion, because I don't think that's in the taste to not have a petition when you're changing traffic, that's going to directly impact people's parking situations, especially since parking is like one of the number one issues in the city, next to public safety. So yeah, I, you know, maybe that's something that we can inquire about. I don't want to hinder any part of this project, I would love to see it come to fruition, but as long as the right steps are taken. And that's nothing critical against you, but just to make sure you dot all your i's and cross all your t's. Thank you.
Thank you, CDP. That was a great question. Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. So Jen, thank you for being here tonight. Keep working with ATC, Delaware Valley River, you know, D P R S, but you guys always do so much, too, with each Trenton and the north and the whole city, and it's so darn important. Having this area have traffic calming, it's going to be extremely important, it's going to help save lives, I believe, over time. The trucks are one other issue that's going to get tougher as we get a little go along with development, but having the bike lanes narrowing things, and I know from talking to my constituents out there that they are very concerned, Paramount got speeding, how many of them lost side view mirrors over on Mulberry, so we'll do everything we can to hopefully make this community event a success. I know the consensus out there is very strong to make this happen, and I know you've done all your homework, and as my colleague said, just want to applaud you for doing that and going out to talk to the community, coming back with solutions. This is a home run. I wish we could clone what you do and take it to other parts of our city, but it's an inspiration to have you come here, bring us a plan with the timelines and everything else that's going to be in place, and just please keep doing it, because Trenton needs you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. It was just one other thing, as I was looking, I love again the project, the idea of if it is within your budget, the reflectors, the paved reflectors on the ground, as well along some of the paths like there, it actually lights up the way when riders are on there, and makes for just a more inviting space. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia, we're going to move and go back to the recognition.
Certainly, Madam President. If you'd like to introduce that recognition, I'll go ahead and get the focus back onto the Council with the computer.
Thank you. So if we could ask Mr. Poppy Sanderson to come to the podium, please? And anyone that would like to stand and support him, you can stand behind them if you'd like. I know some people wanted to speak, but we're not going to allow that because of, for the sake of time, but I know you have some supporters here, so I wanted them to be with you. So we have, on behalf of the Trenton City Council, a special recognition honoring Mr. David Poppy Sanderson for his outstanding contributions in the field of athletic training and community service. David Poppy Sanderson has dedicated over 50 years of exemplary service as an athletic trainer for the Trenton Board of Education, where he positively impacted the lives of countless students, families, athletes throughout his professional care, mentorship, commitment, and commitments to the students of Trenton and beyond. Poppy, I want to say Poppy, sorry, it's spelled official on here, but Poppy pursued the academic journey at North Carolina A and T University and further advanced his expertise to the University of Pennsylvania Sports Fellowship Program under the guidance of Dr. Joe Torre, becoming a licensed professional by the State Board of Medical Examiners of New Jersey, and is a proud member of the New Jersey Athletic Trainer Association. And whereas Poppy is also an accomplished entrepreneur as the founder and president of the Education Outweighs the Law Sports Apparel, a company rooted in encouraging youth through athletic and education. Throughout his distinguished career, Mr. Sanderson has worked with prestigious organizations and events, including the NBA Players Association, the Athletic Atlantic Basketball Association, the Primetime Basketball Classic, and the Professional Softball Association. His leadership and service has earned him over 30 honors, awards, and recognitions. There was a whole long list, and I didn't want to include them all and read them all, we'll be here all night. I'm just honored that you allowed Trenton City Council to be on the list, but a couple of them were, recognition including the NBA Players Association's Top 100 Camp 25 Years of Service Award in 2019, the City of Trenton Outstanding Contribution to Sports Fitness Wellness Award in 2015, Lifetime Achievement Award in 2015, the Legacy and Fatherhood Award in 2012, a Long Time Service Award 2012, the Senior L.O.K. Drum Major Award in 2012, some of the many accomplishments that are reflections to your national and local impact in the world of sports and athletic training. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the City of Trenton and City Council recognize and honor David Poppy Sanderson for his lifetime of service, dedication, and contribution to the athletic training, education, and positive imprint you continue to leave in the lives of so many here in our city of Trenton. We'll let you say a few words now, if council wants to say anything really quickly, and then we'll take a picture, but if you want to say something first, we'll let you. Anything? So Pop, you have turned on the mic or pop?
Oh, okay, yeah. I think you said it all, I've been doing this for 50 years, and I'm really appreciative to the City of Trenton and some of the things that I was able to bring back from all the camps that I've done and all the inventaries that I've met, you know, just so many over the years that I just can't even remember them all, especially being at Trenton High School and watching so many good athletes come to the high school and to the tournament pro, and coming back and giving back. Recently, J.R. Brown, who's came back from the San Francisco 49ers, and just had Phil Holland, who's with the Eagles, so he signed with the Eagles, so he's with the Eagles right now. So those things, they carry on, but the most important thing is that they come back. And this is what we talk about all the time, it's not so much like the work that I do sports medicine wise, I do that, I think, very good. I worked with the NBA for 30 years, so I think that what we talk about in the training room is like lessons about coming back to the community, always giving back. We talked that with Troy Dunson, of course, everybody knows Troy, top guy that did it right on Faircress Avenue, who's now number two man in the NFL, you can't get any better than that. But we talked about community service, and I'm really big on community service. So when I tell those guys, when we sit down, we talk about what's the plan, what are you going to do with your life, how are we moving forward, a comeback, and you've been seeing that in the city trip for the last, I think, 10 years, I've been doing the Education Outweighs the Law clinic at the high school, and with this year, last, well, this year, which is past five, we just had over 300 kids that participated in the camp, and along with four other professional athletes, so I'm just going to continue to do that, community, continue to work with the community, and I thank you for this recognition, thank you so much.
So, okay, I want to, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you, Council President. Congratulations, Poppy. We thank you for everything that you do each and every day. Thank you for the work that you've done, thank you for the legacy that you've left, thank you for loving on Trenton, thank you for loving on the kids, thank you for allowing them to give back and for setting the standard high right? Thank you for allowing them to give back and for setting the standard high, right? You set the bar high for others to look to come, to do the things that you have done. Certainly, no one will ever be able to replace you and who you are, but they can aspire to get to where you have come to be, and we appreciate you. God bless you and may you have many more years to come.
Well, thank you.
So we're going to get ready to take, oh, anyone else? Uh, Councilwoman Williams?
Uh, Coach, I just want to say to you, no one can count the thousands of lives you've saved, the thousands of families you've changed for the better, but thank you for everything you've done. Um, I know many high schools, including my old high school, the Pines, who have loved their pet, uh, Poppy Sanders. Um, it's important what you've done in your life, but also I know as a coach, you probably see what's more important is the lives that those athletes you've coached and you've been a part of and who you've handed in the tape rooms of what they've gone on to do. And that's a testament to you, sir, so thank you. God bless.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
So, Mr. Poppy Sanders, uh, there's nothing more that really needs to be said about you. I just want to personally say thank you for moving excellence, for moving that in a way that we can push out, chest out proud and say you belong to us and we belong to you. We are so grateful to have him here in the city of Trenton. And for us, they say the world, uh, Trenton makes the world taste. You are the epitome of just that, uh, but I love that you plant the seeds that remind them to come back and to sow back here into their own community, and it is beautiful to see how several of those who have gone on to me in the professional fields have come back just with that in mind to come back into here. So thank you for what you do. Thank you for moving in essence. Thank you for being a part of our lives and for our children. You are the example that we need and our children need, and we appreciate you for staying here, because you could have gone anyplace else, but we thank you and we're grateful that you stayed here in the campus. Thank you, sir.
Uh, thank you.
CDP.
Hey, Poppy. Um, I want to say thank you. I want to be repetitive, um, with the rest of my colleagues, but I want to say thank you. Thank you as a former athlete myself, you weren't one of my coaches, but you coached some of my other friends, and I know as a former athlete, how important it is for our coaches and our trainers. You are not just teaching us the sport, you're teaching us life skills that we will carry with us for the rest of our lives. And I want to say thank you because my daughter, who is not athletically inclined at all, found her way into sports management and football, and I credit a lot to you because she loves you, she looks up to you. I couldn't get her involved in sports to, to be an athlete in her extracurriculars, but to see her actually enjoying being a sports manager on baseball and football and the way she admires you and talks about you all the time. I just want to say thank you from, from former athlete and a mother and a former student to Trenton High, so that you look exactly the same as I was there twenty years ago. You look the same too. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Well deserved and well earned.
Yeah, you do deserve me every, every day.
Yes, it's great.
Thank you.
So Pop, we're going to get ready to take a picture, but I just want to say, um, they don't make them like you no more. That is just, that's just plain and simple. They don't, um, you, along with, you know, you've got the greatest in the building, you all have put in fifty plus years, there's still so much in all of us, and I say us because me included, I'm the, you're one of the reasons why I came back to Trenton to teach and to coach and to do all those things, so I just want to say I love you. You know how I feel about you, so love you, you deserve it. This was an honor. He was the, uh, grand marshal for the Homecoming Parade, and normally Homecoming would have been this week, and that was the reason why, um, we chose to pick this day to recognize you, but you know, we love you. You've got a whole school of people that wanted to come and support you and sweep. So I know freedom is in the building, and I wanted to say a few words, but due to limited time, we're going to let him stay in team first. We're going to take a quick photo down at the bottom. Thank you.
Oh, oh, Councilwoman Goodroll Hepburn, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's okay. Um, Poppy, I'm, I'm sorry, a long meeting to have to miss. My son and I are under the weather, and I am so sorry that this is a meeting that I cannot be there for. Um, I am, I never would have thought that I would be sitting here twenty-five plus years after graduating from Trenton High and being able to honor so many people that are still in the high school, still doing amazing things or have been in the high school for so long and doing amazing things. I can't count how many times that I've sat in your sports center and either got in the hot tub or got a massage or whatever from soccer and softball, and there's nobody more deserving, um, you've done phenomenal work, you've been an inspiration to so many of us, and I'm just honored, um, to be part of this council, to be able to honor you tonight. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Artest.
When you say the name Poppy Sanders, all over the state, they know you. Um, you're a gift from God. Thank you for all the lives you've touched. The world is a better place because of Poppy Sanders. Thank you.
We could keep you for a while.
Yes, Madam President. On your phone, Madam President.
Uh, we can speak, we can go on, um, public comment for agenda items.
Yes. Madam President, at this time, we've reached the point of public comment for agenda items only. If I could have the clipboard for public comment for agenda items only, please. And it looks like security's not provided. Hold on one second. And to the public, public comment for agenda items only is if you have anything to address on the docket or agenda. Um, if it is not a docket or agenda item, then you will wait for a public, our regular public comment. Uh, Madam President, we have three individuals listed for public comment for agenda items only, and they have listed the matters which they would, which would like to speak in reference to. First individual is Frank Cusack.
Okay.
Again, to the public, the public comment will be five minutes for each individual. You may address one of them, so on the docket at this time, and the council is not obligated to respond. Thank you, name and address for the record.
Frank Cusack, three forty Throp Avenue, Hamilton, New Jersey. Uh, good evening, Council President and the council at large. Uh, my name is Frank Cusack. I'm a resident of Hamilton, but I am a proud employee of Mercer County in Trenton every day. Um, I am the founder of the Coalition of Healthy Water and the originator of the Vote No Confidence in Trenton City Council petition on change dot org. I'm here to discuss referendum twenty-five dash three four and twenty-five dash three seventeen. Under twenty-five dash three four, the ad hoc committee, uh, you are looking to create a subcommittee that oversees the issues at Trenton Water Works, seated by three current city council members, the same city council that is currently in charge of the Trenton Water Works and where we find ourselves today. Uh, not to be blunt, I've been searching all day for the nicest way to put this, but this honestly feels to the people of the service areas, the blind leading the blind. Under twenty-five dash three seventeen, you're looking to do another financial report. Um, I did have a comment, uh, on a comment I made on Councilwoman Edwards on Facebook stating that a new assessment outside of the Ravatella study, the D E P's T M F and three sixty report needs to be completed to understand the full picture. The Ravatella's report stated to, that there is two hundred and thirty million dollar repair project that you are asking for making a sixty percent rate increase necessary, but the Trenton Council, for some reason, does not know the valuation of assets or bonding capacity. Edwards also stated the assessment would give us a full understanding of the capital improvements and staffing needs, which Ravatella's and the D E P have already stated. Order, under ordinance twenty-five point three seven five, there is a proposal from Operation Services for six point six million dollars to complete R F P two, uh, twenty twenty-five dash two three that lays out staffing needs. With all that said, it is not lost on me or most people in the service area, the optics of the state or a white guy from Hamilton coming into Trenton telling the people of this city and the city council that there have been failures. This is a decade old problem that we all know, and we are now at a critical point and a crossroad. We could let politics and rightfully placed distrust continue the status quo, or we can realize there is an issue that contains water safety and water security for this generation and generations to come. I recently read somewhere that now more than ever, we must build strong communities and trusted networks, not shallow ties, but bonds forged in shared responsibility and proven trust. Those of us that live in the service area outside of Trenton, that we don't have a choice of who to get our water from, it is Trenton Water Works. I have listened to many hours of meetings, hearing cries from council members saying that the D E P is not offering help or support. I hear that you are trying. I understand that this is hard, that there's a lot of red tape, there's a lot going on. But all I am asking is that you hear my voice and the voices of the four hundred and seventeen people who have signed my petition, that we are asking for fair representation and a seat at the table when it comes to our water utility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Becky Taylor.
Uh, my name is Becky Taylor. Um, I am a resident of Trenton, moved here in two thousand and seventeen, but my history with Trenton goes back to when I was a reporter back in the day for the Trentonian covering City Hall. Um, so I've had many, many years with Trenton, and I love Trenton, love, love it totally. Um, my husband and I moved here in two thousand and seventeen. We live across the street from Catwalter Park, and I am now the co-chair of the Catwalter Park Alliance, and because I have such a passion for walking, um, and a colleague of mine, um, Tim Brill, and I are co-chairing a, um, a program called Trenton Walks. I hope you've all heard about it. Um, we've had almost sixty walks since June of two thousand and twenty-four. They are so fun, and there's so many wonderful things you see about Trenton. The city has such a rich, rich history and such beauty, and a lot of people may not realize that. The other reason we started Trenton Walks is because we want to better engage across the lines of Trenton, and we're doing that. So I encourage all of you to come out for that. I have two very brief things to say about Trenton Water Works. Um, I am, um, I'm, I'm frankly, um, you know, really worried about what I understand is going to happen in terms of the rate hikes and the disproportionate impact on people of Trenton because of their income, uh, vis a vis, uh, the incomes of other towns in the county, and I, I, I just don't think that's right. I, I think it's going to, it's not going to be good, and I'm worried about that. The second thing is, I'm scared that it's, you know, based on everything I've read and all the things the independent, um, consultants have said about Water Works, this system could fail, and it sounds like it could fail at any time. I am very much worried about all of our safety and all of our values, property values, so I just ask you to be thinking carefully. Your jobs are so hard, and I know they're, you're torn in a million different ways, but let's make sure that we really do serve the people of Trenton and the people of the rest of Mercer County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark, is that Lackington?
It is, thank you. Hi, Mark Lackington. Uh, my address is one zero Bud Catwalter Drive. Uh, I also have another address that's one a little bit more relevant for tonight, and that is, uh, trentonwaterworks.substack.com. It's a website that I've been managing for about two months now, and I had twenty thousand page impressions in too much, so if you want a metric as to how much people are paying attention to this issue, I think that might be a good one to follow. Um, I actually prepared, uh, something to, to discuss tonight, and then I sat through the most heartwarming presentation to Mr. Sanders. I don't, don't feel the ability to call him Poppy. Um, and it reminded me how many times I have heard council, residents, and other people describe the Water Works as our greatest asset. I, I, the, the, at the H two open meetings, we've heard folks from Trenton Water Works called the crown jewel that's embedded in our identity. I, I really think that our greatest asset are, are the people like Mr. Sanders and the, and those people that have, he has impacted. And I also want to transition that into the, to the discussion that I wanted to have tonight with you all about the future of the Water Works. Um, I'm happy to see the ad hoc committee finally get its due time as an ordinance or a resolution, I'm not sure how you're doing it. Uh, I first heard that discussion come up at this dais ten months ago, and here we are today. As the, the hottest topic in, in, you know, in, in the city, and it's taken us ten months to get something on the docket. Looking back at September's meeting, it, it was not until nine months after it was identified that the, that there, there's a higher end barrier to the most critical positions in our utility. There are, I was looking at the T M F report in preparation for tonight, the average tenure of the engineering team at the Water Works, I can put up one hand. In fact, it only takes four fingers to describe the, the longest tenure in the engineering department at the Trenton Water Works as of January twenty twenty-four. Four years. Go back ten years, that number was ten times that. There were people working here for forty and fifty years with dedication like Mr. Sanders had to the cause. This is the area that focus needs to be given, and I look forward to this ad hoc committee taking the time to address that barrier. In fact, I would, I'm looking forward to the day that I see action on revisiting the salaries that we are paying these individuals. They are pathetic, and I don't say that lightly. There are people in technical positions in the water department earning forty-five thousand dollars a year. You know how many people in the water department make over a hundred thousand? I've found two. You know how many people in City Hall make over a hundred thousand dollars? Ask for the numbers. The only way that these people are making any, the ability to, to, to eke out a living at the Trenton Water Department is through endless overtime hours. Please, this ad hoc committee, ask the finance, ask personnel to give you an average. Please, this ad hoc committee, ask the finance, ask personnel to give you an average number of overtime hours being worked by these individuals, and ask yourselves if you would put in those hours for that little bit. That is the issue that all of this comes back to. If we create a Venn diagram of all of the issues that are facing the water department, the commonality of every one of them is the ability to perform. It is not the ability to raise money, it is not the ability to test assets, it is the ability to take these resources, turn them into projects, and create a stable and reliable water system. With that, I thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, those are all the individuals that I have for public comment for agenda items only at this time, and if it's your wish, but to ask for a motion to approve communications, petitions, and reports.
Yes, we have a motion to approve communications, petitions, and reports. So moved.
We got a roll call. Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cadiz.
Aye.
I heard a yes, I believe, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
That's President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. And moving on, Madam President, to this ordinances for second reading in public here, beginning with ordinance twenty-five dash one oh seven, and just to the public, and I'll ask for administration to confirm, ordinance twenty-five one oh eight is pulled, correct?
Yes, Mr. Court, that is correct.
Thank you very much. Moving on again, back to twenty-five dash one oh seven, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as eighty-three Oak Street, identified on the city tax map as block eighteen oh three, lot ninety-three pursuant to N J S A forty-eight twelve thirteen C to M and B Real Estate S L L C for the sale price of ten thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public that wishes to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing now, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
We have motion to approve twenty-five one zero seven.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cadiz.
Abstain.
Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, why did they pull twenty-five one oh eight?
I think as you pointed out, Councilwoman, there was a conflict between another ordinance that had been asked earlier and the property that was being conveyed with one oh eight. We need to fix the earlier ordinance before we can say it versus this one.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
On your call, members. Thank you. Ordinance twenty-five dash one zero nine, ordinance authorizing sale of city-owned property commonly known as forty-three Southern Street, identified on the city tax map as block eleven oh one, lot eight pursuant to N J S A forty-eight twelve thirteen B five to Hattie Q. Wilson for the sale price of one thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. Are there any members of the public that wishes to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing now, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
We have motion to approve twenty-five one oh nine. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cadiz.
Aye.
Abstain, noted. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one ten, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as one fifty-seven Rosemont Avenue identified on the city tax map's block fifty-eight oh two, lot twenty-two pursuant to N J S A forty-eight twelve thirteen C to Garland Barber for the sale price of five thousand dollars. Are there any members of the public that wishes to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing now, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
We have motion to approve twenty-five one ten. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cadiz.
Aye.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. And Madam President, that brings us to resolutions at this time. Are there any resolutions that you or the council wishes to extract for questions or for, from a possible consent agenda?
Council President.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. Twenty-five three seventy-nine. Three sixty-five. Three sixty-six. Three seventy-three.
Anyone else?
Council President. Twenty-five three four, twenty-five three seven eight, twenty-five three six one, and that is it, ma'am.
Got it. Madam President, I would also like to question three eight four, three seventy-eight, and three sixty-one.
Got it? That's it?
Yes.
Got it?
Same thing.
Same thing, and C B B? Same, got it. All right, go to this light. Three eighty-four, Mr. Garcia? Oh, me, I'm sorry. Three eighty-four is Councilwoman Williams and Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And I think Councilwoman Harrison, did you also have a question?
Oh, sorry, yes, Mr. Harrison.
I'm just going to jump, I'll take that. So I have some concerns regarding this, Council President, particularly the second paragraph where it says, whereas the city Trenton operates a Trenton Water Works, a regional public water utility providing essential water services to residents of Trenton and several municipal municipalities. In my opinion, we are not a regional public water utility, we're a municipal public water utility solely owned by the city of Trenton. So I'd like to know the origination of this wording and what the intent is. I also have a concern with creating an ad hoc committee with three council members out of seven, because I think that leaves a lot of room for, you know, potential information to not be shared at the same time with the council. I thought as, you know, notorious or infamous or famous our session, our meeting with Commissioner La Torre was, I do think it was very good to have all seven of us discussing this, who should ask a question at the same time. So I'm wondering how this would work and function. It's such a big issue, we're talking about an asset that could be potentially worth, it is worth hundreds of millions of dollars, and how that would go forth over the next year or so. So both of those are my questions.
The originator is Council Vice President Edwards. So I'll let her respond. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, C B B. I want to say that, number one, that was not supposed to be in there. I didn't draft this myself, our attorney did, and that was, this was supposed to be changed around operating a public utility that services the region was the correct language that was supposed to be in here, in addition to the misspelling of my last name on the presentation, Mr. Clerk. But I just want to explain the intent behind this ad hoc committee. Number one, yes, we are a body, we are a governing body of the whole, for the city, all seven of us, but ad hoc committees are helpful for us to minimize council, right? So there's things called sunshine laws, where if we have more than three council members, then the public is required to be notified, they're required to be included, public comment, city comment, what have you. It kind of slows down the process when we have a lot of council members in the meeting because of that. And being able to get all seven of us, or at least to reach a forum for a special meeting to deliberate or go over or work on these things creates a lot of, it just drags it out and it passes timely manner. So for the sake of addressing this timely, because I did try to form this ad hoc committee back at the beginning of the year to address the Water Works issues, which I feel like, in my professional opinion, we could have been a little bit further along had we done this, because we would have been able to meet with the commissioner earlier in the year, we would have been able to work with the administration more thoroughly and been a little bit more progressive and progressed along further than where we are now. But because we could not reach an agreement at the beginning of the year, this is why we're just now seeing this in the month of October, when I proposed this in January. I proposed this because of the Corona issues, because of the time that it takes to do special meetings, and I want to respect everyone's time on this council as well as the public's, right? So if we're doing this special meeting that requires us to miss classes, miss work, miss family, miss all these things, whereas if we can do an ad hoc committee, maybe we can do it on a lunch hour, we don't have to wait for all seven of us to do it in the evening, and then the public is going to be involved, the public will know. Every council member that is not on this ad hoc committee will know what's going on. This ad hoc committee, as similar, or exactly the same as the other ones we passed in the beginning of the year, will require for it to be reported out to the rest of the council. We will be reaching out to the rest of the council, those that will be on the committee if this passes, to collect your consensus of what your suggestions are, your recommendations, your concerns, make sure you're in the know on what the D P commissioner or D P is saying in general, or what the administration is saying. Whatever comes out of that meeting, you will know, and you will know beforehand what that meeting is going to be about. Notes will be provided. And so I don't feel like creating an ad hoc committee is eliminating anyone else on council, it's just for the sake of progress. The gentleman that just spoke at the public comment just a few minutes ago highlighted the slow progress that we have been making on here. So this was done with the intent for me to kind of speed things along so that we can address these issues in a more timely manner. So I dive right, if you guys have anything.
I just, I just beg you out of the following. I'm very concerned, particularly since the Commissioner La Torre has desired to meet with individual council members on her own, and to my analogy, did. And I understand at least some of the other municipalities and mayors have reached out to council members to try to reach out to them and speak with them one-on-one, which I think puts them in a bad position, but also, you know, divide and conquer is not something that's going to work for this, and I think we should be on guard about that. But also, the intent of protecting Water Works, we have to be given a chance, in my opinion, to save Water Works, and I think that can be done, but also, in order to do it, we shouldn't be in a rush to solve this problem, we should be deliberate, we should take our time, make sure it's done right, because we have to correct, true or not, according to what's in that report, violations and issues of concerns since nineteen seventies. And one of the things that was brought up in the past was the summer of nineteen seventy-five, when there was an issue with water in the city and overflow, and I remember that, I was a young child, and I thought it was fun to go running around in the alleys and overflow, didn't know any better. But at that point, decisions were made to help with Water Works, to try to keep it going, to Band-Aid it, whatever it was, this is our opportunity to fix it. When we saved the Water Works in two thousand and ten, that was a community effort, and I know you know that history quite well, too. And this is something, we shouldn't let other municipalities try to push us to make a quick decision. And while, as for respecting what you're trying to do, I don't think in this case, in this scenario, it's the appropriate form for our council to move forth with this, and I think we can save this Water Works as a team, as a seven-member team, not an ad hoc committee, respectfully.
So, C B B, thank you. So not to, like, go back and forth or anything, but I just want to provide clarity that myself, being a presenter of this idea to create an ad hoc committee, I'm all in for keeping Trenton Water Works one hundred percent owned by the city. No one that I have talked to, that I would like to be on this ad hoc committee with me has any interest in selling Water Works, or has any interest of doing a regionalization, privatization, or any matter at all. And any decision that is going to happen will be voted on by all seven of us. No one in this ad hoc committee is going to make any decisions on behalf of council without the entire council. This is just to, like I said, well, like you said, perfectly said, divide and conquer, just because of the sake of time and progress. We do have other ad hoc committees. We did have Kingsbury for more than two years, where we were meeting bi-weekly with them. We also have an H E D ad hoc committee, which Councilwoman Edwards, you sit on both of those ad hoc committees, with myself and Councilwoman Feliciano and Councilwoman Frisbee on both of those committees. So those work, and we keep the rest of the council informed. No decision was made on behalf of this council without the inclusion of the council, and no one was excluded at all, not the public, not the council, not the administration. We work together very well, might I add, and I think this ad hoc committee could work just as well, if not even better, than the ones that we have. So I would hope that you would put some trust in your committees to represent your concerns and your suggestions as well, if you're not one of the ad hoc committee members, and trust that we will represent you faithfully in our city as well.
Thank you, ma'am. And respectfully, I don't think it's a matter of trust, I think this is a different animal. When we're talking about development projects such as Kingsbury, such as I G D projects, that's not a utility. That's not something that provides something which to me is a human right, which is the access to clean water. And to me, it's not the same, but I respect your opinion, ma'am.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Thank you, Madam President. So I concur on many levels with the council, my colleague Councilwoman Williams. I don't want to feel that we're rushing into anything, and I also agree with, well, the gentleman said, yes, our scientists are underpaid. They are qualified and certified, but yet they, we are not allowed to raise their salaries. So that has nothing to do with what we, our will, but it is where we are right now. I'm not sure how much input Commissioner La Torre has in this, but I don't want it to be that we are putting people on the ad hoc committee when it comes to our Water Works who he deems should be on there. I believe that there are several of us who are not on ad hoc committees at all, and those are the individuals, if this ad hoc committee were to be formed, I believe they should be granted the opportunity to sit on this committee. Several of us are already on, several of them, I think others should have the opportunity to be on the ad hoc committee. Yeah, the phrase divide and conquer, that keeps ringing with me as well, this, I'm on the fence with it, I believe it could work, it might not work, and I believe that what we do collectively as a council, we do, we do well, we stand our grounds, we have our discussions, we have disagreements, and then we come back together. But this is something that we have been talking about for some time right now, and I just want us to not feel rushed. I don't want the community to feel that we're rushed. This is our utility, this is ours, this is Trenton's. Yes, we service everyone else, but this belongs to Trenton, and I want to, I will stand firm on that. I take it personally, it is the Trenton Water Works, and we provide the services to the other municipalities. So I would want to revisit this again and then go from there. Thank you.
Council President, if I could. Yeah, Harrison wants to say something.
Councilwoman Harrison, she wanted to say something, too.
C B B, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to address that. Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee and Williams as well again. Um, I just wanted to say before, um, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Harrison speaks, no one put me up to this. No, not a single mayor, not our mayor, not any other mayor, not the D E P Commissioner, no one. I come from Congress where the structure is committees. I come from the state. The structure has committees before things even make it to the docket. They go through committees before they get, um, to Congress on the docket. They go through committees. The committees have to approve things and come out of that. That's not the structure I'm trying to create here exactly. But it's just us having a proper structure that will help us to be more productive and progressive in our resolutions as we are moving along and dealing with these different entities and dealing with these different people, um, to get our waterworks and get any type of, um, situation up to par with this city. So yes, um, like there are some council members that are not on any ad hoc committees at the moment, but there are opportunities for us to rotate. Nothing is permanent. And, um, to that point, Council President Gonzalez is not on either of those ad hoc committees, but I asked her to be on this one so she has that opportunity. Councilwoman Harrison is not on one, but he has an opportunity. Either one of you can always form an ad hoc committee for any pressing issues that you see fit to address, um, that you would like to have collective power from your colleagues to do. So for me, I'm just taking the initiative to try to get more organized. Because quite frankly, that meeting where the Commissioner came here was not that productive. We got a lot of information, but I don't feel like it was a very productive conversation. Um, I don't feel like we reached any resolutions from that conversation at all. And that is the purpose of me revisiting the ad hoc committee, such a recommendation to you all. But like I said, it was, this was not supposed to say arrangement of the water utility and I'm going to have that language changed.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Um, my question is this. Um, I was told that there was a meeting that happened yesterday regarding certain council members and the D E P Commissioner. Um, what happened in that meeting?
So that, I was going to bring that meeting that up. I was waiting for the next resolution since we started with the ad hoc. But there was a meeting that was held yesterday with the D E P Commissioner, with myself, Council Vice President, Councilwoman Feliciano, the mayor, our attorneys, um, in discussion with, um, some ideas that obviously he is trying to put forth. Um, we clearly stated that there's things that we wanted to do. As a collective whole council, we all decided that we would say no to the regionalization that he was proposing the day that he came here in front of council, but we wanted to show that we were doing something. And that something was agreed upon, that we would want to do an assessment. We've expressed that to him yesterday. I know Councilwoman Feliciano and Councilwoman, uh, Council Vice President have drafted other ideas or avenues that we can possibly consider, um, which is going to be discussed coming up. Clearly, those are the questions that are going to be asked. So just to give a backstory on that, that was, that was the, the meeting. Um, it was not initiated by myself. I think the, uh, meeting, he reached out to Council Vice President and the mayor and that's how this meeting came about. Um, so that was, I was going to say that publicly. Um, so no one thinks that there was any, anything done behind the scenes. And I did communicate that to all of council. So all of council was aware that this meeting occurred and I tried to have a conversation so everyone knew what happened. Um, and from that, we did come up with, if, if we were to do an assessment, who would be paying for it, who would be the bill? All of those kinds of discussions were talked about at that meeting. Um, I was very clear that Trenton Water Works is Trenton Water Works. I don't want to do anything that looks like a regionalization, any type of wording, any type of anything that says regionalization, point-blank period. Um, I know Council Vice President and Councilwoman Feliciano, we want to address their opinions on what happened at the meeting, but for the gist of it, that's what occurred.
Council, Council President.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, that was a perfect setup into exactly, um, what I was going to get to. My case in point of having an ad hoc committee because the meeting that we had yesterday with the D E P Commissioner was a very, very informative and productive meeting in which solutions were recommended from that meeting, which are, um, doing the assessment in which I believe that most of council agrees to do. Not doing an assessment based on the predetermined outcome of doing a regional authority, but doing a financial assessment of our waterworks to determine how much we can afford to take out in bonds, to address the repairs and things like that. I know people have a lot of questions about the different reports and things. He explained what the different reports were to us. He explained what the assessment was to us or is to us and the outcomes of the assessment, the possibilities. Now, doing an assessment, we agree that we're, if we were to do an assessment, it would not be based on a predetermined outcome like regionalization. We're not going to be forced to just pursue this one avenue. We need to see what is going on with Trenton Water Works financially first. Yes, we had the T M F report, which the purpose of that was about compliance and capacity. It was about the managerial. It was a financial overview. It told us the scope of how much the repairs could cost. But it didn't tell us, um, itemized what needed to be repaired, how much each one would be. Capital improvement and plan was not been told in that our outstanding debts, the revenues owed to us, whether debts can be consolidated to free up more bonding power, to be able to take out more bonds for this utility to be able to address the infrastructural needs that D E P describes is on the brink of catastrophic failure. We want to address that. The three sixty report was about performance monitoring from the state. So this comprehensive financial assessment that a lot of people deem not necessary because there were reports already done, that is not true. Those reports were not, uh, a fiscal analysis of Trenton Water Works. They were, they were the compliance and capacity analysis. They were estate performance monitoring analysis. And the scope of that was about holistic system, systemic performance. It was about technical managerial, financial overview, but it was not about a strategic financial planning. No, we do not know the valuation of this asset called Trenton Water Works because the administration, who is supposed to know these things, does not know them. So we are doing this and the next resolution that you'll see is a resolution of support urging the administration to do this assessment, which includes evaluation of assets. When we talked in the meeting yesterday with the D E P Commissioner, we were talking about what exactly this assessment is. Not just shutting it down our throats, not sending us a letter and giving us a deadline on, on when we're supposed to pass a resolution. We're not going to be voluntold with the due. We need to be able to understand the full scope of the issue so that we can make an educated decision collectively. However, I believe that the ad hoc committee could accomplish what we accomplished after that, which was a more progressive, productive conversation. And, um, and I would say that to, how do I say, to eliminate any other council member, to install anyone else who's intelligent on council that won't be on the ad hoc committee because unfortunately we can only have three due to sunshine laws. So we talked about that stuff yesterday. We talked about, um, the R F P that the D E P had put out and, um, to assess the regionalization. We did not agree with that. And we told him that. We echo the sentiments of all of you, of the community as well. We understand the community does not want regionalization. This council does not want regionalization, nor do we want privatization. But what are our options? We do not have that answer as of yet. That assessment will tell us what our options are and then council will be able to vote on that. So we weren't trying to sneak and have a meeting or anything like that. It was just the follow-up from the meeting that we had back in August so that we can determine what the next steps are and bring that back to council and let you all know what the next steps are.
Council President, can I speak?
Yes, I know Councilwoman Feliciano wants to say something. Go ahead.
Okay. So we're voting tonight on an ad hoc committee, but yesterday was an ad hoc committee meeting, which we hadn't voted on yet. So it's the way, it's kind of smells like something don't smell right here. This is, this doesn't make any sense to me. I just found out about this, so it's kind of weird now that we're going to vote on this, but we had a meeting, some of my colleagues had a meeting yesterday, what I had, ad hoc committee, with the D E P Director. Um, who's going to pay for this independent settlement? Who's going to pay for it?
So the, the outcome of the, uh, the agreement was that this, uh, Department of Environmental Protection would be footing the bill for this, not us.
Right. So the same D E P that says that we're catastrophic is going to pay for it to come back and say that it's catastrophic. So we're listening to all of our, this doesn't smell, this doesn't take a spell. This is, this is a slow shade of emergency oil. I ain't voting for any of this. Um, if you're going to miss any, you better wave up because I'm telling you right now, you're getting taken in the woodshed right now. This don't smell right. This don't smell right.
Thank you, Mr. Councilwoman Harrison, but, um, just, just, I know Councilwoman Feliciano would like to say something, um, first, before I say my.
Go ahead, Council President.
No, I was just going to say that, um, I was a part of that meeting and I have no intentions of doing anything fishy, smelly, whatever you want to call it. Um, I was actually brought onto the meeting. I, I, I was taken back by us having a meeting. I'm not going to lie, part of the meeting. So I did attend because I wanted to know what was going on and what was going to be discussed.
Council President.
Yes, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. And thank you to my council colleagues for expressing what it is that you have to say. So let us be clear about what happened. After the meeting with Lotteret, when he was here, based on everything that happened that took place, apparently the mayor sent a, a letter to Lotteret wanting to have a meeting. Council Vice President Edwards sent her own separate correspondence to Lotteret based on whatever she wanted to say to him. Based upon their conversation, he said, we'll have a meeting. He said, I'll meet with you. I'll meet with the mayor, but we'll have other council people if you like. I didn't know nothing about the meeting until I got the invitation to say, show up for the meeting. I asked, what, what's this? C V P said, look, we're going in, conversation, likes you to be there. If you can schedule it to be there, you're a council president. Okay. Individual meeting or about this council person? We go to the meeting. It was a good, interesting meeting. But I'm going to, I'm going to touch on a couple of things real quick so we can, we can wrap this together. Councilwoman Edwards did say before about an ad hoc committee when it came to water, when it came to police. Y'all know she was ad-hopping us out when it came, um, in the beginning of this. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Edwards loves her ad hoc committees. That, that is just what it is. Y'all know that she's been asking us for a minute. We can have one for this, this, that, and the third. And she did also mention water as well during that time. Why it never came to fruition or why we never saw anything about it, I don't know that part. But now we're to the point here today where she's saying an ad hoc. The meeting yesterday was not an ad hoc committee meeting. It was a meeting that we were invited to attend that was arranged by Council Vice President. So let us be clear about that. Let us be clear. I've never been shady and I'll never be. I never said that I was giving up Trenton Water Works and I'm wrong. You all know, I said something over there that said, let us look into, look to having the Trenton Water Utility Authority based upon, when I talked to the mayor, what, a year and a half, two years ago, I said to him, we need to have some kind of advisory board and bring the other municipalities to the table before the shit gets to the point. Now we're to the point where it has hit, okay? Council Vice President Edwards said, the Trenton Water Authority peaks. She and I were on the same wavelength about bringing folks to the table, but not giving anyone control except for the city of Trenton. Hence came forth the document that I created that circulated saying, here's what the water authorities look like. Here's the breakdown, right? For all of us to look at it and see. So I've never done anything behind anyone's back. Y'all haven't. You haven't did that. You have to back work. Mr. Kalogi then said, let us move to do a resolution of support because if that's what we want, then that way we're answering to the residents of the city of Trenton and to the other municipalities that we are looking into something that we were not sitting on our hands. That is the intention of what is in front of you all tonight. That is the intention. Nothing shady, nothing out of the way. And no one can say that they didn't get anything in writing from me because I know we all did. So the ad hoc, I'm not against it. I don't have to be on it. I, I don't, I don't have to be on it. I want the right thing for us to move forward. I'm not sure when you all found out that we went and met with Lotteret yesterday. I apologize if you were not told timely. That's not my charge to keep. So communication is important. I don't think anyone did anything to be nefarious. Anybody did anything to be, to be sketchy or anything. It, it just was a meeting. It happened. Here we are. I think maybe, maybe if we had waited with these beyond having a conversation fully about it, however that could work, because we all seven can't be in a room at the same time and have a conversation. If other conversations were had and then things were brought forward instead of now, things could go a little bit differently, if you all agree with that. But no one's trying to pressure anyone into thing or anything or push. And Sean Lotteret didn't twist anyone's arm in the room. It was from my standpoint, look, we're not with the regionalization, period. We understand studies and things have to be done either way for whatever we're going to do. The suggestion for the water authority for Trenton was put on the table. D E P said they will pay for the comprehensive studies, the three point nine million dollars for that to be done. But this is council-driven. This is council-led. It is Trenton. It is not D E P. That is all I have to submit about all of these here. I, 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 I agree with the ad hoc committee unless we can be guided to a way that all of us can be together. Can we, can we do an executive session or something where we can talk about this stuff? Y'all know how this go. One minute we can talk, next minute we can't talk. If we can get clear guidance from legal or clear guidance from the clerk on what we can discuss and how we can do it, then let us make sense of this. But I am not for divide and conquer. I am not for us going back and forth. I am not for us standing ununited on this issue. No one did anything to be funny. And again, I don't know when you were told about it. I'm sorry that you weren't told at the time in which you thought you should have been told. I apologize for that, but that was no ill intent that was ever meant. I know we shouldn't assume. I thought y'all knew. Thank you.
So I don't want to keep going back and forth about this whole issue. Um, but I do want to state that, yes, I did call Councilman, well, Councilman Harrison actually called me and I told him what we were doing on yesterday. So I did inform him yesterday after the meeting had occurred. Yes. Um, and then I reached out to each council person individually to let them know today everything that had, was discussed at that meeting. So I want to be clear about that. Um, going back and forth, um, with all of this, I know we said we're going to try to look it all in together. Um, C V P, I know you had an, an idea, but I actually do want to try to see if we can table it all of this um, until we have further discussion. Um, I don't, you know, there's certain things we agree with. There's certain things we don't agree with. And right now, we don't need to go back and forth about most of the language in here. C V P, did you want to say something else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say in closing, um, this definitely will be amended with that, that slight language reversal. That was definitely an error in oversight on my behalf. We were editing all of these resolutions to get them ready for this evening. Um, this was a resolution that I, again, introduced at the beginning of the year and I did attempt to introduce it a month ago to council. Um, this, before this meeting was ever even, before I This, before this meeting was ever even, before I even reached out to the commissioner, before he scheduled anything, and also when he reached out to us to schedule the meeting that happened yesterday was at short notice. So we entered, there's a lot of rescheduling and figuring out what that meeting was going to be about and everything like that. I reached out to him a few weeks after we had met in August to follow up with the meeting, to thank him for coming here and to do my due diligence and research more into the TMF, more into the 360, and more into the assessment that he was recommending that we have. I did that in August. He called me in September, three weeks later, because he was busy, as he told us when we were trying to get him in here in the first place, that he would be traveling around the country. Now, fast forwarding to September, when he called me, he asked me, and he told me that the mayor had reached out as well, and he wanted my advice on whether he should invite council. And I said, "You absolutely should," because it would, going forward, eliminate any confusion, any lapses of communication so that we're not getting secondhand information, so we're getting firsthand information. And if we were to keep working with the commissioner and DEP in general, we would always have to do that as groups of seven and have special meeting after special meeting or have you come in here, and then our meetings are extremely long. So we wanted to just have an hour, just get to the point, narrow it down. What is this assessment? And can it be from a point where it's generic and not with the end result of regionalization? Once we got that answer, which we achieved yesterday, who is gonna pay for it? He said if we agreed to do an assessment, not the regionalization assessment, but in assessment, that they would pay for it. And we have to move now, because this administration on state level's last day is December 31st this year. We don't know who's gonna get into his office next year. So that's why I'm suggesting an ad hoc committee. And, and when he reached out to me, I said, I said respectfully and respectfully, "Council President should be there." And because it was my meeting, I asked for, I also asked for Councilwoman Feliciano to be there because she used to work for Trenton Water Works. She warned us about a lot of their internal issues. Myself as a customer having a whole bunch of issues that she helped me with a few years ago when she was working there. I knew from a customer standpoint and as a representative of the city what the issues were externally. So with the two of us combined, and that doesn't negate any expertise or experience or knowledge that you all had, that was who I asked to be there at the meeting so that we can avoid a sunshine, you know, corner and so that we can just have this conversation. I, and I, I'm not saying this to be funny, because this meeting had, it was nothing to be funny, nefarious, try to cut you out or be sneaky or anything. But I am going to do my due diligence regardless. So whether that meeting happened collectively, it was going to happen individually. I was going to pursue that meeting one-on-one or with council, without council, because I need to know. I had to make an educated decision as well as the rest of you. So I want to be fully educated and knowledgeable about every single thing that there has to do with Trenton Water Works. So that was why I reached out. It wasn't to go rogue, because everyone did agree to be collectively, we did that. Now, I, I finished or continued on my path of educating myself, and that was the full intent of me reaching out to him. And, and his intent to reach out to me was because he wanted to continue the progress. He may not be there next year. We have less than three months for them to pay for this assessment. Otherwise, we are on our own with that. Millions of dollars that we could use for the repairs rather than doing the assessment. Let them pay for it, but we have to agree to that. So that's what that meeting was about. And so now we're bringing that to you guys today publicly at full disclosure and full transparency. And you all know, I'm very transparent to eight falls. So this is just full honesty. Councilwoman Harrison, there was nothing flimsy or fishy about it at all.
I think, I guess I said to you before, I said this in front of the commissioner. He was here for five and a half years, never met what the previous council, right? So five and a half years he's been sitting there, he meets now with us. Now, you set up a meeting with him that majority of us didn't find out the half of the fact. To me, this doesn't smell right. So I, I know you're saying, the administration, the administration, though? I mean, the administration got invited, but to me, it seems like this was not done with clarity where everybody on this council knew. Because to me, I think if we're a body, we should all know about that meeting. We did. We found out everybody. You know, to me, this doesn't sound right. This just does not sound right. You're right, we wanna table this, but at the end of the day, it is. It's called Trenton Water Works, not called anything else. And I'm for Trenton Water Works. I believe in Trenton, I love Trenton, and I tell you what, Sean Seppel has been busting his home over there and his wonderful staff trying to get the jobs done. So for people all over time to turn around kicking Sean's back in, it's ridiculous. It doesn't sit right with them, it just doesn't. This, this should have been done on the up and up. And now, if I didn't bring it up or say something, would have anybody have known about this meeting? I don't know if they would.
Council President?
Counselor Feliciano.
Thank you. So again, Councilman Harrison, your, your points and your feelings are very valid. All your points are valid. I don't, I don't shun anything that you're saying. And I'm not pointing fingers or anything. I'm stating the facts as it is to be. I, with regard to having the meeting or going to the meeting and everyone being notified, you should have been notified. You should have been notified.
So I'm gonna take that for right there, as I didn't communicate that before we met, so I would take that charge, but it wasn't my meeting that was called.
Right. No, and so, Council President, thank you for cutting me off in the middle of my talking. That was not a personal attack on anyone. It wasn't a personal attack on anyone. This is business we doing right here tonight. This ain't nothing personal, this is business. I don't know who was supposed to call who. I'm hearing now that you weren't called and told. I'm sorry that that did not happen. It was not my meeting, I did not call. I told you how I found out about the meeting when I got the notification. I'm asking what is going on with the meeting? Do I think that there was anything wrong with Councilwoman Edwards intent for her to have her own conversation? If that's what she wanted to do as a councilwoman? No, that's her business, and that's her prerogative to go ahead and do that. Because she brought us in to that to hear again, should y'all have been notified about it? I guess at that point, you should have. And again, I'm sorry that that didn't happen. And that's how I have to leave there. I am for Trenton Water Works. And when it comes to the Water Works, let us be very clear about this. That Water Works has been having certain issues for a minute. Like Councilwoman Edwards, I have warned this council and I have warned this administration about the different things that were going on over there that I personally saw, that I warned and said that things were not right when it came to the billing, when it came to those estimated readings, when it came to different things that were going on when we all came here and everybody packed this council chamber that we got our head surgery to say y'all thought I was, I was rising, done that, they're simple, so he would lose his job, when I wanted to ask, "Are you on top of what's going on when it comes to what's happening at the Ewing Town Center when rates were not appropriately charged? And under the other councils, some things happened that didn't go forward where the rates for the meters weren't right and we weren't getting the proper revenues that we were supposed to get?" I asked those questions to get clarity so that we would all be aware when we made the decision about who was gonna be next or what was gonna happen, that we were aware of what was happening. But a lot of people came in here saying Stone, Crystal, because who does she think she is? I think I'm the councilwoman that warned y'all about this. And so now here we are. I want the best for the city of Trenton. I've always wanted the best for the city of Trenton. I want the best for Trenton Water Works. I've always wanted the best for Trenton Water Works. We've made some good decisions on some things, and on some things, we could have made some better ones. We move forward from here together. Again, I'm sorry y'all ain't get the call. But I, that's all I have on it. Nobody did anything to be sneaky or anything like that. And I'm sorry that you feel that way, Councilman. And, and that's how I'm gonna have to leave that with you. I'm sorry that you feel that way. Thank you.
Council President, can we, can we at least, can we at least let the public know who was all in this meeting? Who was in the meeting?
I just said that.
All the members, all the members who were there? Was anybody from Trenton Water Works there?
No, it was our water attorney. Mike, Mr. Mike, our water attorney.
So we have a meeting about Trenton Water Works, and we don't have our Trenton Water Works Director there? I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, that was, the mayor was in, the mayor and Council Vice President are the two who scheduled this meeting. I was invited and Council Feliciano was invited. At the meeting, the mayor did write in the water attorney with him present, and then it was the DEP Commissioner in the room. I'm gonna motion every table 384, 378, 361.
Motion.
Oh, sorry, this is big, you're in here. Until, until the next meeting.
Oh, you said second. Motion to the next public meeting?
Yes.
Councilman President, that's moved by yourself and seconded by?
Williams.
Williams, thank you, and we'll take a roll call. Vice President Edwards? Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figaro Katzenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Firstby?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
No.
No, and Councilwoman Williams?
Ret，则 yes.
Council President Ozawa?
Yes.
That motion carries. And that is for the collective of those resolutions to be tabled until the next public meeting, correct?
Yes, and then on to 25, 379, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of quick questions. On the, on the, the second page of the memorandum, under Financial Fiscal Impact, it says funding for such hires will be allocated from, and then it says insert funding source, example, blah, 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 blah. What is the funding source for this?
It's gonna be dependent on which project is gonna be, Councilwoman. So there will be some projects that may be funded by state grant money. There may be some projects that are funded from operating budget. And there may be some projects that are funded through federal grant money. Now, those are some examples. It's not an exhaustive list.
So I think, so I wasn't sure. It, it looked like, because it was like insert funding source.
Yes.
I, I think if we could say something like funding for such hires will be allocated from the, like, the following examples, you know what I mean? Not in?
Well, I think if we take out the insert funding source, and again, this is simply a memo for the benefit of council.
Right.
It's not part of the resolution itself.
Okay. Yeah, I just was curious about that. And then, on page one of the memorandum of understanding itself, where we have under purpose and scope, the last paragraph says, "To the extent possible, the Trades Council shall prioritize referrals of qualified union members who are residents of the city of Trenton." I'd like if we take out "to the extent possible" and just say they shall prioritize referrals of qualified union members who are residents. I don't think we should say "to the extent possible." I think we should say they shall do it. If we're not, we, we don't qualify, and we just don't qualify.
Okay, I, I understand what you're saying. I'll just, we can play with that to make sure it works.
And then letter D on page two, again, the where possible. If we could strike that and just say the Trades Council shall prioritize referral of qualified union members who are Trenton residents, including apprentices. Not the where possible, they're gonna look to do that first.
As long as we understand that the terminology shall prioritize means that if they're not available?
That's right, I get it. No, I'm not, but I just don't like the where possible, because that just leaves things open, just... The intent is that they're gonna look at Trent first, they're gonna prioritize it. And if it doesn't happen, then that's, that's fine, it doesn't happen. Other number four, administration and oversight. Who would the designate be if not the HED person?
It could be an architect, it could be an engineer. Again, it's gonna be dependent on what type of projects we may be utilizing these direct hires for.
And on the page three, under seven miscellaneous, number two, it says that this MOU represents the full and complete understanding of the parties and may only be modified in writing with formal approval of both parties. And I think that we should say an approval by a city council.
You can check with Mr. Kalogi, but I don't really?
If we can, I don't know if we can or not.
The mayor's not permitted to do anything in writing without your permission, so.
Okay.
Already given, but.
Okay, so Mr. Kalogi, is that, is that not right to ask for that?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, what's a precise question?
On, on page three of the MOU, under number seven, says that this MOU, the second bullet, it says that they can change the MOU between both parties. And I was saying, and the approval of council, is that not appropriate to, to say?
It's appropriate, clarifies the reason that both parties are obviously using the city of Trenton and the building trades council of the city of Trenton. Council will be the body that controls it.
Right, so I can say, okay. Thank you. So, Mr. Beach, I'd like that added in to say, and with the approval of council.
Agreed.
That's, that's all I have on that. Council President, that one, thank you. So just the changing of the wording. It, well, it can go to consent, if they, if they wanna go and do all the changes that I'm asking for. So do we agree to the changes, Mr. Beach?
Yes, sir.
Or should we table it until the, the changes are made?
I don't know, I'd say we still don't wanna, yeah. But can you change by tomorrow morning's agenda or no?
Yes, sir.
Cap, I just send us the final copy.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman.
The mayor requested, could we potentially change that by tonight without having to forego that till tomorrow morning? Reason being, it doesn't seem like it's a substantial change. But I leave that interpretation, Mr. Kalogi.
Well, or, or Mr. Garcia, who'd amend that? That would be Mr. Beach to amend it and make the corrections on that final copy.
Corrections to the?
Can we just make the changes now as amendment and then vote on it?
I'm sorry, so this is for, this is for 362?
379.
379, I'm sorry. Okay, and you're trying to get amendments done now to this?
Right, she wants some language added and taken out.
Language added and taken out, then you would have to motion and recite that language.
So wait a minute, so as, I'm sorry, Council President? May I?
Yes.
So if we, looking at what I'm asking for, if we go and we're working just on the resolution itself right now, Mr. Garcia? One, two, three, four, five, the fifth where as. The fifth where as. We are striking the words "to the extent possible."
Fifth where as.
The fifth where as, to the extent possible, right?
To the extent possible.
And we're starting with the Trades Council will utilize qualified union members who are residents of the city of Trenton as well as local, right, on all fronts?
So you're starting to, to the extent possible, fifth where as?
So, and then you're gonna take afterward utilized, so you're gonna say the Trades Council will prioritize? Yes. Prioritize using qualified union members who are residents of the city of Trenton. Thank you.
I'm sorry, so now is there a motion to amend as, as we just explained?
We have motions to amend 379.
So, side out.
And that's a motion to amend the fifth where as, striking "to the extent possible" and swapping the word utilized for pri- and swapping the word utilized for prioritize.
Right, they will prioritize using.
Right.
Qualified. And then Mr. Beach is going to change the wording on the MOU. Um, it says to match, but I'm good with putting, if we, if we vote on this amendment, I'm, I'm good with doing a resolution like this.
I'm sorry, my apologies. Um, so then we have a, so we have a, uh, motion to amend the second, uh, called a rule. Vice President Edwards?
This is amended. Yes, amended.
This is to amend. Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisby?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried, to amend, and?
If you go on consent agenda?
Did you want to, would that be on consent?
Yes, that's fine, yes.
Consent, okay.
Thank you.
Consent, as amended.
Now we're on third, 25, 365, Councilwoman Feliciano and 366.
Thank you. Hey, Assistant BH here.
Good evening, Madam.
Hello. Um, just a, a quick answer will suffice.
Of course.
When it comes to, one, two, three, four, five, six, the sixth where as on here, the tax collector, um, recommends the extension through 93027, allowing, allowing the lien holder to receive its foreclosure action and get the final judgment. In this extension, excuse me, does the person that this hap, is happening to, do they have the opportunity to save the home or keep if they find the means to? Or are they entitled to x out this altogether?
Until the, the, uh, final judgment, the property owner always has the opportunity to redeem. Although I, uh, I'm sure the bankruptcy complicates the situation. So I can't speak in detail, but absent that frustrating process, a property owner has until final judgment to redeem the, uh, situation.
Okay, excuse me, consent, thank you for that.
Both are just enough.
Um, and then, uh, 25, 366. That's 62,82499, what, what's that? What happened with that? Is that per court order, what happened with that? If we could talk about it?
I would pref, I, I can give you some more detail. I don't have all the detailed information on that judgment, but I can have it produced by the tax collector in writing.
Okay, but the court determined that we have to refund this money? We have documentation stating that?
That's correct.
Okay, consent, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Of course.
Um, may I? I'm sorry, Madam President. Um, I'm sorry, Mr., um, just one more question. I'm going back to 365, the, um, you're talking about foreclosures of windows and all that. Can we as a municipality, can, can we do an amendment of some sort where we are going in a, 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 going above and beyond to extend, to give the, the owners of the, of the properties that we are about to foreclose on more notice? Um, and I'm asking that, because I know that we have a lot of foreclosures that have been coming before us. We, I personally have gotten countless, countless, uh, telephone calls about folks who are just finding out about it. It might have been lost in the mail, it might have been a deceased family member, um, and it may have been sent out. We say we send out tax, um, notices, la, 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 over and over again. Can, is there a way of us, when we know that we are about to foreclose on a property, to send, okay, um, we say, all right, this is the, the final push. We've sent out notices month after month, a year, two, whatever it is. When we know that we are about to, can we put it in there where we say, all right, the month before, we actually want to go, this is the let, we do one final push to let the family know, this is your final, your, your final chance? There are a lot of families that are losing generational wealth, I'll say, generational history in homes because they, it's my mom, it's my dad, it's whoever. They were in there, they didn't realize that this was going on or whatever, or it might have been oversight, Mr. Beach, or whatever. But I would like to see this resident of the city of Trenton retain more of their home instead of them going on for the foreclosure block, um, if at all possible. So that's the question to you. Is there a way of us making some type of amendment?
Uh, I, I don't think that there would be amendments specifically. We, we provide as much notice as possible. Certainly a conversation that we can, we can engage in. And I can certainly speak with the tax collector about providing more information, both electronically or perhaps in some sort of town hall, trainings, uh, situation, to inform individuals of what they can do if they're concerned about a family's property. Because it sounds like what you're, from what you're saying, Councilwoman, perhaps the issue is that the address we have to notify these people is, has changed and we're not aware of it. Because if we, if we have the appropriate address on file, these individuals are receiving notices, as you said, month after month for a minimum of two years. Uh, I will note, this particular 365 is not a city foreclosure. This is, we, uh, when we assign a lien, we require that the lien holder foreclosed within two years if they were going to foreclose. That was part of our lien assignment. Uh, so this is a little bit of a different situation. But in the situation in which the city is going to foreclose, uh, typically, we don't foreclose on any occupied properties, especially residential properties. But it is something we can continue to work on. And I would just encourage you and encourage members of the public, if they are aware of a property and the family owned by perhaps a relative who passes away, the best bet is to reach out to the tax collector, the tax assessor's office and say, hey, you know, my family member owned this property, they have passed away. What do I need to do to make sure that I can get notification properly, redeem any liens? Um, because as I said, I, I think if they're not getting noticed, the likelihood is that we just don't know, uh, the proper communication, the proper address. We haven't been notified that the person we've been contacting is no longer able to receive that notification.
So one other question, do we send out certified letters or notices with regards to foreclosure? And is that something that, um, we make sure that we have something signed for? So there is an acknowledgement that there is actually, um, the fam, a family member has been notified?
We typically, it depends on, on the situation. Most of our communication is not certified mail. But again, uh, we send an abundance of communication, so it is, I suspect, in the cases where an individual has not received it, we, we just don't, we have not been notified that there has been a change of address. And I just encourage council members and members of the public to be in contact with the tax collector's office. Let them know, call, email, whatever you need to do. Come down to City Hall and just let us know. Because we, we don't have a way of working that out.
And I appreciate that. I just think if we're doing a certified letter, that is a, a good push to say that I really want to make sure that someone is notified. Again, I know we're doing business, the city is a place of business, but I really want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to help our residents maintain their property or their loved ones' property. Um, because there are many times when, uh, a loved one passes and we, the city, don't know about it. Of course, um, no one's supposed to want to notify us, at least not readily. But, uh, we can say we've done our due diligence, we did this, we did this, but at the very, we sent out a certified letter and there's something that we can say is on file. If someone signed for this, so they know you have weeks or whatever it is, a month before your property is about to be foreclosed on, it gives the family that one last opportunity to, hey, I need to go pay attention to this. But if, if it's a loved one that is deceased, they may not just be paying attention to the bills. But if you get something that is certified, that, that, that's an alarm that goes off as opposed to my mail that is just, though we, we should pay attention to all of our mail that comes in. But I'm just trying to make sure that we are doing our due diligence to make sure that as many of our residents can maintain those properties as possible as opposed to others coming in and taking it up for pennies. Thank you, that's all. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Um, 25 dash 373, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Council President, Sean, Central Director of Water and Sewer.
Good evening, Director. Um, the second where as, it says, will we place approximately 600 lead service lines in the city of Trenton? So that we're in Trenton, do you know the areas in Trenton that we're looking to do with this?
So this is the federal where as.
Right.
And it will cover, the only ward that's exempted from this was the South Ward in this. That's because of the federal guidelines that we had to go through.
So you're doing 600 between the north, the east, and west?
Yes.
Okay, so will South Ward stuff ever be there?
Yes, they're next.
But under a different?
Bond, we, we, our new bond will cover entire Trenton as a whole, the entire city.
Okay, so this is northwest and east.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, consent.
Council President? Uh, uh, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you. Uh, I thank Councilwoman Feliciano for asking this question earlier, but I just wanted to expound on it. Um, do we have any lead line replacements that are, I don't want to say repeats, but are do-overs from before? Because I know we had a controversy with that one company at Newark that had issues, but this program's been going on so long, particularly when residents had to still pay for this. I just wanted to see, are we having to go back and fix any work that was done previously?
So the DEP in conjunction with, uh, Trenton Water Works, we did an assessment and DEP is formulating which ones we need to go and investigate. So I'm waiting, looking forward for that list from the DEP.
Do you have any feel whether that's a, a long list or a short list, or how it would look like?
I don't think it'll be a long list. I don't think it'd be a much sample that we have to do throughout the system.
And did they give you a timeline on delivery of that list, sir?
I'm hoping that we, we, I brought them in a meeting with the DEP just this week and we're hoping to have a result, a response on them within the next couple of weeks. Because we have to go do that investigation.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to ask if you could, when you get an update, if you could provide an update to City Council on, on the list?
Sure.
How many orders we're looking at and where.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Consent. And that was it of the resolutions, Mr. Garcia.
Okay, Madam President, and I didn't hear of any roll calls, correct?
No.
So that being said, President, one asks for a motion to approve a consent agenda excluding the items tabled?
Maybe a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of 25, 381, 25, 362, 363, 25, 379, 380, 382, 383, 364, 365, 366, 367, and 368, 369, 370, 371, 372, 373, 374, 375, 376, and 377.
So move.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisby?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Madam President, that brings us to ordinances for first reading and introduction. And just to note, there is a, uh, ordinance that's been provided to us, uh, as of recent or on. It is ordinance 25 dash, and we're going to number this 130. And I will go ahead and read that to you. Now, bond ordinance, ordinance 25 dash 130, ordinance, bond ordinance provided for phase six, six of the lead service line replacement program in the Trenton Water Works service area by the city of Trenton and the county of Mercer, state of New Jersey, appropriating $20 million. Therefore, am authorizing the issuance of $20 million in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. And I will recite that again once we conclude these first reading ordinances. Starting with 25 dash 068, ordinance amending chapter 201, peace and good order, to require the hiring of off-duty law enforcement services for private gatherings within the city of Trenton consisting of 50 people or more.
Council President, by name?
Yes.
Um, the administration will, I understand there's going to be some discussion, um, possibly with this, that's at one of you.
Thank you.
Full by administration, understood. Okay. Moving on to 25 dash 111, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property, commonly known as 29, 31, and 33, Garfield Avenue, and identified on the city tax map as block 26804. Lots 22, 21, and 20 pursuant to NJSA 48, 12, 13B5 to G Construction Contractors LLC for the sale price of $12,000.
Maybe I want you to approve?
So move.
Thank you. Council President?
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. This is just a general, um, blanket, uh, discussion for, about all of these, uh, all of these properties, right? I had, um, sent in a, a message to administration just asking if, excuse me, if a comparison is done or if there is a log kept of these LLCs and if any of their properties are, that they may own already, like have a tax lien or something against it, so we can see what's going on. I would like to see, when we get these, that we, we know exactly what's going on with these LLCs, um, and the properties. Because as you know, I mean, I, I know I kind of harp on it a little bit, but we keep selling these properties to these LLCs and, and we have no clue who they are. As a matter of fact, um, Mr. Cologie, I'd like to know if it's possible to, um, put forth an ordinance that says that when the LLC, like when the people apply to buy properties or whatever, they have to disclose a contact person, like there has to be an actual person that's listed. Because then from there, excuse me, we can even run them and see if they have any tax liens against properties that they have. I feel like we're doing this, and I understand the administration wants to get the taxes on the rolls and all that sounds good, but it's a, it's a whole slew of LLCs on here tonight. And, um, I just, I have some concerns about this, to be honest.
Definitely, we'll certainly look into the issue. I don't have the answer here at the moment. And we're also in an unusual situation, because the whole city is now a redevelopment zone.
Right.
And these properties are being sold under a different statutory mechanism than the local lands and builders laws, so we're going to have to take a look at that.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Kevin, I love it.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg, she, she asked for comment.
Thank you, C P, I appreciate it. Um, so really quickly, before we go through these, um, you know, I know I go the same way and I have many questions about the ordinance, the property sales. I have not, um, been shy about my stance on it. I do appreciate having a conversation, um, you know, with the administration about this, but my answers, I, I have, I, I'm not in agreement still with whatever this rubric is for these property sales, um, so ever. Um, I did say no or after the conversation, I did send over what you just said. Um, you know, what this, what the ordinance is currently for buildable lots in the city of Trenton, um, and just briefly, 25 hundred square feet is, is a buildable lot for a single home that's not attached. 12, 18 hundred square feet in the city of Trenton is a buildable lot for row homes in the city of Trenton. Having said that, some of these lots have multiple sizes, various sizes, and, and multiple prices, and whatever the rubric is, um, again, this does not make? Again, this does not make sense to me. I've offered a suggestion of maybe, you know, value of whatever the housing value is, you know, to accept whatever the bid is for the person seeking the property, whether it's a lot or a building or what have you, then to, you know, counter offer with a percentage of what that face value on that property is. Again, you're to agree where that has not, that has not paid after sending the zoning, zoning ordinance and what those buildable lot sizes are. Again, I don't feel comfortable in voting on these, any of these ordinances for sale of property. Again, once again, I am not against sale of properties. I'm not against putting properties on the tax rules for the city of Trenton, but I wanted to be fair and in, sorry to point out the state that we're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Madam President. So I just would like to add to what Councilwoman Feliciano said, and I've said this previously, and I'm just going to echo it again, that we also, I would like for us to look into whether or not we can have the names that were previously used by some of these LLCs before, who are changing their names to buy property, and they have their bad landlords in this community. So can we have that as well? Can we have that identified? That, because I know one company off the top of my head that has changed their name three times. They have put little things on their truck to, to make the change, but they're still doing business in the city. And they're bad, they're, they're, they're not good for the city, but they leave people high and dry, they leave people in a hole. And we are not doing our community any diligence when we, when we're not doing our top community service, when we're not doing our diligence to make sure that we can identify those individuals and make them make the necessary repairs for what they have previously done as opposed to going ahead and rewarding them with allowing them to purchase more property.
Council President? Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you. Just want to add one thing. This is proprietary information. We could also require in the application the listing of the president of the LLC, which I believe is standard by the Department of State in the state of New Jersey when you apply for an LLC, as well as the date the LLC was established, which will help us create a chain and a popcorn trail so we can keep track of who's who, because often when, as we all know, everyone in this council has spoken about this, that we have LLCs that change names so frequently, particularly when you get in trouble. So this would be a way for us to at least know who is the real person in charge of the LLC, this property, because when the story comes, we need to know who to go to. And we also need to know, are they a fly-by-night or are they well-established? So I request calmly that those two items be added to the application too.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yeah, I was going to say really quick, if I'm not mistaken, I know that that discussion did come up earlier on in the year, and I've had recent conversations with the interim director of Vasquez, and those questions are being asked where they aren't getting their actual information of the person that is applying. And they put, in most of these applications, they do have some of the actual names of the people behind the LLC. But that is something that I think we should talk, when we tried to draft this earlier on in the year, or maybe even last year, I know it was like some galavies with it, but that's something I guess Mr. K can do some further research on, because I think it is a great idea to make sure we get more information on those LLCs.
Council President? Yes, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. Also, too, to speak to Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg's point about, excuse me, us measuring this out. If you'll recall at prior meetings under the former AGD director before we got the checklist, I did an analysis of the properties that were there and looked at the lot sizes and the numbers that, that showed as assessed were really close, and it was something they pulled offline, I'm not sure. So I looked at the lot sizes and saw the differences in, in the assessment values and in what people were offering and what we were doing, and it made no rhyme or reason, right? So we were able to get the checklist done to say, do this, so we can see. I do agree that we need to have some kind of scale or something, like I asked for, so if it's a twenty-five by one hundred-foot lot that the average assessment is, I don't know, ten thousand dollars, let's just say, that the people have to at least come in between twenty-five and fifty percent, like it needs to be a gauge across the board so that whomever applies for it, we're not getting one person paying this, one person paying that, which were all the questions and concerns we're coming from. When we had some people who could get a driveway put by, and they had to pay a higher amount from somebody that bought a buildable lot that paid a lower amount. That there has to be some kind of benchmark set so that we can feel comfortable as, as we move forward and do this. So I, I agree again with Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg that it has to go back to the drawing board. Also, I think that I'm hopeful that the administration is actually looking for a capable, competent AGD director that will do this in the process as well as the department, so that we can have someone dedicated and devoted to look into all of this that would know how to do this and could go ahead and create a good system so we're not up in the air guessing back and forth or seeing these numbers fluctuate and change in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Vice President?
Thank you. I just want to go back to an earlier suggestion and also let everyone know that I've asked multiple times as early as last week as of today. These ordinances should go on an ad hoc committee agenda. That is the purpose of an ad hoc committee, so that when these things are brought to council, those, all these concerns that the entire council is expressing right now would have already been hatched out. I have requested from the administration multiple times to set up the next AGD meeting. We were given ample opportunity to the acting director to, you know, get, become activated with the department, and it has been some time now. And a week ago at docket review, I did revisit that request to start having our AGD ad hoc committee meetings. And for people that don't understand what an ad hoc committee means, it's like a subcommittee, but the way the FAWCER Act is written, we are a whole committee, so that we can't say subcommittee. It prevents us from saying subcommittee, so we call them ad hoc committees. So three of us could be on an ad hoc committee and work with the administration hand in hand to come with, come up with a rubric, to come up with a checklist, a process that would, would clearly state the step-by-step of what we need from the people that are purchasing it, whether it's from an LLC, if it's in an LLC, we want to know who the owners are. We can determine that by simply requesting the formation that they got from the state when they filed for the EIM, when they filed for their LLC, you know, from the IRS or from the state of New Jersey, or whatever state they had opened up their business in. I do understand that people do like to buy properties in LLC, and people do that because it takes the liability off of the person. So if someone trips and falls or has an accident on that property, their personal checking and savings accounts are not affected. That LLC is the one that is suing. So you are personally protected. That liability does not come on you. So I understand why we are seeing the fluctuation of LLCs, which could be someone who intends to live in the property or someone who intends to rent it or sell it. That is also determined on the application of what they intend to do when they purchase the property or reconsider to purchase the property. So again, case in point, we need ad hoc committees, because we could have hashed this out. So I would like to urge the administration to please set up the meetings so we can get back to business and help match this out.
Council President, may I add on this? Council Vice President, I've never received any email from you requesting an ad hoc committee meeting.
It was with, it was with BA Richardson during docket review. She asked him.
Okay, apologies, but that's, you know, I'm the one who's been shepherding these through for the last two or three months, and I've never received any requests to meet with an ad hoc committee. As, you know, Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg can attest, I'm more than happy to sit down with whatever subcommittee, ad hoc committee, whatever you want to call it, and work through these, these issues with you. You know, there is a pricing rubric. I'd rather not get into details of that in this meeting, but in closed-door sessions, you know, as long as we're obviously abiding by sunshine laws, I'm happy to go through how we're pricing. Now, I acknowledge what Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg said about the different sizes of lots for conforming and non-conforming. And actually, after she sent me that email, I went to our planning department. In fact, there are four different ordinances depending on what part of the city they're in, what zoning they're in, and whether it's commercial or residential. So all of that impacts. What we've been trying to do with the rubric is make it much more streamlined, but, you know, and that's going to result in some of these quirks, let's call them. But, you know, it's not going to be a perfect system. We're not going to be able to get a pricing rubric that gives you an immediate, exact price for every property. You know, there's different factors that we're considering, how long it's been on the market, what condition it's in, in addition to some of these more objective factors. But again, you know, I'll welcome an opportunity to sit down with however many of you wish to sit down and go through how we are coming up with the prices we are. On the issue of the LLC, we are requesting that they put a human person on there. I do agree with Councilwoman Williams' recommendation about having them, have it be the officer, because anybody can make up a name, so. But thank you for all your suggestions, and I'll wait to hear from you.
Thank you, Council. I wanted to just finish my comment. So thank you. I didn't realize that it wasn't being communicated with you to set up these meetings. So I will send you an email sometime tonight or tomorrow to follow up with that request and follow up with you, because it has been requested multiple times by the BA, who was in our previous AGD meeting. So I thought that through my communication, since it never lapsed before, that was who I was continuing to communicate with. So we'll definitely reach out to you to start scheduling, and we are, each of us on the ad hoc committee, Councilwoman Williams and Feliciano, has requested for those to be consistent, like biweekly. While we're talking about it, Councilwoman Feliciano and I talked about having our AGD meetings biweekly ahead of docket review. So if we can go over these ordinances to make sure all the odds are valid and the scenes are crossed, and then docket review, we make sure everything is fine to go on the docket. So if we can streamline that process, I think we'll be in a better position going forward. And Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg, feel a lot better?
But it's not about feeling a lot better. It's about, it's about having order. And I mean, I appreciate, you know, you wanting the ad hoc committee, and that's great, but this is probably the fourth and fifth meeting where I have expressed my concern with these property sales and rhyme or reason how they do or do not make sense. And I've been asking and have been abstaining or voting no to them. So, you know, this, you know, ad hoc committee being brought up now, whenever it was brought up, that's fine and that's great, but at the same time, you know, you yourself have not abstained or voted no to any of these ordinances when it comes to the property sales, you know, when I have brought up serious concerns. And if you guys can recall, when we all first came on campus in 2022, I had issues with properties being sold on Larriton Street, and I brought up what a buildable lot is, you know, what are contiguous properties, contiguous properties owners being notified and being made aware. So this is something across the board that, you know, we as councils need to definitely be paying attention to. And, you know, I agree, if an ad hoc committee is something that can certify and, and, and make this process go smoother, then great. But, you know, again, this is something that I have been repeatedly asking for, asking for more clarity, and again, abstaining my vote through voting no, because it didn't feel right, because across the board, it just does not make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice, uh, Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg. We're going to move to a vote. Mr. Garcia, thank you.
Certainly.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
We're ready.
So move by Harrison, second by Frisbee. Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Twenty-five, eleven, one eleven.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg?
Staying.
Now then, Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one twelve, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as one oh six North Stockton Street, and identified on the city tax map as block seven two oh three, block seven pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen C to KAA Real Estate LLC for the sale price of fifty thousand dollars.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Go ahead.
Council President? Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. So I just wanted to be clear, excuse me, and on the record, that I'll move for the, the first reading in the intro. However, when it moves to the, to the second reading and, and the passing, things will not, may not be the same if we don't get some clarity in between when it comes to certain issues. So I just want that put out there. I will move to have it read and introduced, but there has to be things that the administration is going to have to answer for us in between for my vote to be in the affirmative moving forward. Thank you.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes, again.
Say again? I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg?
Staying.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one thirteen, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as forty-seven, forty-nine, and fifty-three Wall Street, and identified on the city tax map as block thirteen oh one, lot D twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen C to Elda J. Sandalow for the sale price of fifteen thousand dollars.
We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg?
Staying.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one fourteen, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as thirty-three, forty-three, and fifty-seven through fifty-nine, Popular Street, and identified on the city tax map as block two one four oh three, lots thirty-five, forty, and one, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, thirteen C to Jackson Properties LLC for the sale price of forty thousand dollars.
We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Summoned.
Second.
Council, Councilwoman Feliciano.
I'm sorry, just real quick. One, um, one of the ones we did, uh, with the refunds or something like that, was, was, I just, I just want to check something real quick. Just need to begin once, sorry. Okay. So that, that, that Poplar Street, that big amount, just wanted to make sure it wasn't with this. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, your one call.
Certainly, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty, ordinance twenty-five dash one-fifteen, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as eight North Stockton Street, seven-nine Merchant Street, and eight rear North Stockton Street, identified on the city tax map as block six-oh-eight, lots fifteen, seventeen, and nineteen, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve-thirteen C to AHG Realty Two LLC for the sale price of ten thousand five hundred dollars.
We have a motion to approve.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one-sixteen, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as Seventeen Fair Price Avenue, and identified on the city tax map as block one-three-one-oh-one lot, nineteen, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve-thirteen C to Shein West for the sale price of twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
We have a motion to approve.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one-seventeen, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as one thousand five to one thousand seventy State Street, and identified on the city tax map as block two-six-six-oh-one, lots twenty-seven and twenty-eight, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve-thirteen C to Door Key Properties LLC for the sale price of thirty-one thousand dollars.
We have a motion to approve.
Summoned.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Abstain.
Council, Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one-eighteen, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as one thirteen West Ingham Avenue, and identified on the city tax map as block sixty-eight-oh-one lot two, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve-thirteen B five to Vanessa Jordan Hughes for the sale price of three thousand dollars.
We have a motion to approve.
Summoned.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one-twenty, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as one-twenty-six West Ingham Avenue, and identified on the city tax map as block eight-six-oh-five, block thirteen, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve-thirteen C to Gemrair Asset Management for the sale price of fifteen thousand dollars.
We have a motion to approve.
So, so moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, it was the second.
Frisbee.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Edwards, my apologies. Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one-twenty-one, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as eight-twenty-eight and eight and eight-thirty, Edgewood Avenue, identified on the city tax map as block three-one-seven-oh-two, lots nine and ten, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve, dash thirteen C to Victory Investment Group LLC for the sale price of thirty thousand dollars.
We have a motion to approve.
Summoned. Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one-twenty-two, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as eleven-oh-one Division Street, two-fifty-nine Almond Street, and eight-thirty State Street, identified on the city tax map as block one-nine-oh-two, lot, okay, is that, lot or lot, lot fifty, one-five, oh, excuse me, block one-nine-oh-two, block one-five-seven-oh-one, lot forty-four, and block two-six-three-oh-one, lot twenty-two, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve-thirteen C to Chestnut Development LLC for the sale price of forty-two thousand dollars.
Have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Right.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one-twenty-three, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as four-ninety-nine Center Street, three-twenty-three, fifty-seven, and sixty-nine Jersey Street, and identified on the city tax map as block one-oh-five-oh-four, lot one, block one-seven-four-oh-one, lots forty, fifty, sixty-seven, and seven-two-point-oh-one, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve-thirteen C to Mass Properties LLC for the sale price of one-hundred and four thousand dollars.
We have a motion to approve.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one-twenty-four, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as forty-one, forty-three, forty-five, forty-seven, and sixty-four North Golden Avenue, and identified on the city tax map as block two-six-zero-zero-three, lot six-five-four-three, block two-six-eight-oh-five, lot five, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve-thirteen C to Golden Key Management LLC for the sale price of twenty-five thousand dollars.
We have a motion to approve.
It was the second, I'm sorry. Thank you. Vice President Edwards, roll call, I'm sorry, Vice President Edwards. Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg. Councilwoman, excuse me, Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one-twenty-five, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as six-seventeen Edgewood Avenue, identified on the city tax map as block two-six-zero-one, lot nine, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve-thirteen C to JR American Homes for the sale price of twenty-two thousand dollars.
We have a motion to approve.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one-twenty-six, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as twenty East Ingham Avenue, one-twenty-three North Hermite, Javender, three-twenty-three Second Street, six-eighty-nine Southern Street, four-eighty-four West State Street, identified on the city tax map as block eighty-five-oh-four lot eighteen, block twenty-eight-oh-three lot thirty, block one-oh-five-oh-three lot thirty-three, block eighty-five-oh-six lot seven, block twenty-two-oh-six lot four, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve-thirteen C to MGA G Developers LLC for the sale price of one-hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
We have a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one-twenty-seven, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property commonly known as one-twenty-two, excuse me, twelve-twenty-two East State Street, and identified on the city tax map as block two-five-nine-oh-two, lot thirty-seven, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, twelve-thirteen C to G Construction Contractors LLC for the sale price of twenty thousand dollars.
We have a motion to approve.
Summoned. Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash one-twenty-eight, ordinance establishing limitations and procedures for the acceptance of donations by city departments.
We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Council President. Uh, Councilwoman Williams. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, just want to ask that, there's, um, been some controversy regarding donations in the past. I wanted to see, um, if Mr. Cherry or Mr. Beach could come up and kind of highlight this ordinance for public consumption, just to make sure. Because I, I know this ordinance is meant to correct a lot of things, but also make sure that, you know, whatever happened in the past, we bring it to a good place. Thank you.
Yes, uh, thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, just in summary, this, this lays out the steps for any entity that would want to provide donations to the City of Trenton, how we would handle them, um, the various cutoffs and, and things of that nature, so that we, everyone is on the same page regarding what to do if an entity or an individual seeks to offer a donation of any kind to the City of Trenton. And as you can see in section four, we even talk about what the various values will trigger different sorts of, of review or sorts of behavior.
Am I, um, just as a follow-up, just because it wasn't, you know, plain and clear for me. So if a donor asks for a letter to confirm the donation for their tax purposes, is that something that we provide through this ordinance or, well, mechanism?
Uh, so we are not on five-one-one C three or anything of that sort, so there should be no reason that someone would need such a one.
Thank you for clearing that up.
I appreciate that, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Council President.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. So I see we jumped from a penny to fourteen ninety-nine ninety-nine and then moved to fifteen hundred to twenty thousand. And then city council doesn't get to approve anything until donations exceed twenty thousand. Um, I think that a more realistic look at this, because the one to the fourteen thousand and then the fifteen, twenty is, is a wide jump. If we went like a penny to maybe, um, even four thousand nine ninety-nine, and then five thousand to twenty, and then add city council approval with that as well, um, I think, I think that's, that's a little more, um, a little more realistic. If not that, I mean, if we leave it at the fourteen ninety-nine and then the fifteen hundred to twenty thousand, then we need to add, city council has to approve that as well. Think, because the concern is, why I know the concern for me is from the past actions of things that were wrong and just council didn't know. And, and I'm glad that y'all are putting this into place now, that's good. Um, but I just, I just think that, that's why I said if we went five thousand to twenty thousand and up, council would have approval on it. Uh, I'd be, I'd be willing to say a penny to four thousand nine ninety-nine if council were in agreement with that. For the directors.
We, we would, just so I understand the proposal, we'd essentially be eliminating, uh, section four, subsection B, editing section four, subsection A to say one penny to four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Right.
And then, uh, essentially editing subsection C, which would then become subsection B, to say five thousand and above. The amendment section doesn't have any particular objection to, to those amendments.
Okay, so one second. So, um, council VP was saying leave the first one. She suggested leave the first one at a penny to fourteen ninety-nine, and then do the second one, fifteen hundred to five thousand. And still have council approval for that. Right? So then we would go, or just, or just the, the, um, yeah, and then five thousand more. Because I want to see council approval on everything, five thousand and up. This is why I'm saying. Council President, can, can Council Vice President speak to what she's proposing? At, at last, again.
Sorry, I was just trying to keep up with what you were suggesting as well. So, uh, section C, uh, well, C under section four already has formal city council approval, but it, that's when it exceeds twenty. So to your point with five thousand and more, so if we amend C to say exceeding five thousand or four thousand nine oh nine nine nine, and then B could go up to just four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine and ninety-nine cents. So, or is that where you want to have council approval as well, up to five thousand? Or you're fine with it just with the approval from the BA prior to accepting it?
So we leave the first one at the one to the fourteen ninety-nine. We move the second one to the fifteen hundred to?
Four thousand.
Four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine. And then the last one, five thousand and up. Yes.
Madam President, if I may. Uh, this is also just first reading, so we, we don't have to make these final decisions about those minutia tonight. We can have that conversation and, and work out the details as we move forward between now and second reading. So, um, I don't want council to feel like you're pressured to come up with those specific numbers here. We do have, have the second, between now and second reading to make those kinds of.
Right, but I just wanted them to know my thoughts on it tonight. So as we move forward, thank you for that. Of course, we do have second reading, but I was just saying, just to put it out there for our consideration, um, that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. And, number two.
Certainly, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.[1764.33]
Yes.
Motion Carrie. Ordinance twenty-five dash one twenty-nine. Ordinance amending article, forgive me, my Roman numerals. XVII, what is that?
XV.
Thank you. Seventeen, right?
Correct.
Thank you. Municipal insurance funds by providing for the meth, for the method of appropriation thereto in accordance with NJSA forty-eight ten-one at sec to establish limits of liability and use of funds.
Oh, may I have motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettering.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion Carrie.
We have twenty-five to serve her.
And you have twenty-five dash one thirty. And that is bond ordinance providing for phase six of the lit service life replacement program in the Trenton Water Works Service area by the city of Trenton and the county of Mercer State of New Jersey appropriating twenty million dollars therefore and authorizing the issuance of twenty million dollars in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
We have motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettering.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez. Motion Carrie. Thank you. And Madam President, I believe that is all we have at this time. If you can move on to public comment.
Yes.
And to the public, public comment will be five minutes for each individual listed. Madam President, we have eight individuals listed for public comment this evening. Um, the public, to the public again, five minutes for each individual. Please, you may address any matter that you wish, the council is not obligated to respond. First person listed is Larry Laboo. Is Larry Laboo here? No, Dr. Reser.
But there's a nineteen more than that, we will give his honor. Um, that was, uh, certainly the name and, uh...
The same. My question is for the record, so...
Nineteen more than that.
More.
M-O-R-F. My concern is with, uh, the communist, uh, L.A. Parker. Uh, there is thought that, uh, he wrote in papers about Mr. Harrison here. I think that was a call for, uh, Mr. Parker seems to straddle a fence when it comes to issues in Trenton, Jersey. Uh, he, his article comes out in maybe six or seven other publications. And he seems to, uh, he calls himself a immigration reformer activist and so forth. But I see more that he's, uh, he observes and directly prints what he sees, but never comes with a solution or an explanation why those conditions exist, exist in our city of Trenton, which to me makes it seem that the city council is not doing their job where they're not putting so-called pressure on the departments to do their job and it comes out in the paper. And, uh, the public comes out and, you know, express their, their views. And, uh, I notice also that there's a way of writing where you can, like, like the governor, I'm not the mayor, when he talks, so he puts out information. It's do, if you flip two or three words, it'll tell you that, uh, the way he was writing the articles with Mr. Harrison there, that, uh, it made it seem that, uh, he made a racial issue, that's my sort of concern. When he said, uh, he was the lone, um, wolf on the, on a male and mind you, uh, he's Caucasian and then it makes a reference of, um, why, just because, you know, he made, um, a suggestion to make set player for Charlie Kirk, a young man that I, I thought upon some experience, I know that I seen, uh, I've seen him participate, uh, with people that during time, they changed their rules and their politics and religion and so forth. So Mr. Kirk was one of those individuals, every time he would see differently what he seen now, cause he sees it from a young man influenced by older people. Just like, uh, when, uh, uh, Trump, that was a young man who was doomed by Doyle, Doyle, I think it was Richard Doyle, and told he was gonna make a good president when he was just a young man, maybe the twenties or thirties, makes president now. So Kirk was added to that type of picture, cause he's open-minded, he had a good heart, he was just in wrong, not in wrong, but in a cultural environment that he was accustomed to. Now Mr. Parker has that spirit of being that man where he's an immigrant reformer, but yet he's coming down on the immigrants that he was finding six or seven million, uh, non-American born in a house where it should be, uh, uh, three or four houses, where you got six or seven guys sitting, uh, living in there. And then, uh, the job is, uh, inadequate, then I've been running this outside drinking and so forth. So he has a way of writing where he doubts the city, he makes the city council look bad. I'm not even concerned with the mayor. And, uh, he has no solution of demand, uh, the main issues why Trenton, New Jersey and America is in the condition that it is now. It puts out more than receive Donald Trump's response officer for getting that money. He's doing, he's doing a good job, but from a military standpoint, from a social, peaceful, it's, 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 it's bad business, but for a military, for security reasons, he's doing an excellent job. Uh, I feel both sides of the space, so my, my, uh, L.A. probably to tighten up and, uh, if he's going to be an activist, then attack the system, the overall system that started back with, uh, again, Jada Hooper. And then, uh, Richard Nixon, it's still, it's still going on today. And, uh, of course, we have good politician, bad politician, and the game is played both sides of, uh, internationally. We talk, we talk about black and white, it's not black and white, it's more black, white, brown, red, yellow, it's about good and evil. It's about good and evil, even Alba de Muhammad said himself, he wanted America for the righteous, he said for black. He, he raised up the African Americans, fifteen nineteen, sixty nine, uh, sixteen nineteen, up until the level of humanity. From their own hand, there was their choice to choose God or not. So it's about righteousness, he wanted America for the righteous and Africa for himself. Uh, that's my point for the night.
Thank you. Cassandra and Marcus Tyson.
Good evening, everyone. So I, uh, came here today to discuss, um, placing bids for properties. Um, I'm currently in one of the properties that's up for bidding, uh, fifty-five San Am and Drive. And my concern is that, one, when I came in for information about the bidding, um, it really wasn't explained to me. Some of the questions I had was, what's the start of bid? I was told that, uh, whatever you want, just get the bid. You're the first bid, you'll win the bid. I wasn't never aware that there could possibility be, the, the bidding could be, uh, reviewed based off the, uh, highest bid. I'm currently in a house, it's, um, it's a house that my mother had purchased that lost, she had lost due to taxes or whatever, and we're trying to keep it. And, um, we recently got a situation where I was delinquent running with the real estate managers, I'm not going to put the name out there, I have all the emails and stuff, but I'm not, I don't, I don't want to put a name out there. Um, she was supposed to get back to me about the water bill. Because at the time, my mother couldn't pay the water bill because it was still private. She never got back to me. They cut the water off. I had to jump through hoops to get the water back in. Now we have the water back in, we're bidding for the property. She's telling me that we possibly lost the bid, she says she already know. I haven't got anything to write in saying that I lost the bid. And I, I, I really have concerns. I feel like the individual may have too much power or maybe overwhelmed and just not getting back and communicating with people properly. But I think when it comes to placing bids for people that stay in the residence, they should have first option to purchase. That's not what was told to me. And I have a problem with that. And I, I, like, I, I don't think it should follow the same rules as a big get home. So, I mean, that was my point that I wanted to make today. What did I say?
I just wanted to bring across, uh, the attention of Mr. K. D. Marcus Tyson and her sister, Teresa Banister, all this job. I was just, I'm saying that when we was born to this, it was very stressful. I took two days off of work about this water bill. And, um, it all came, um, as my mom passed away, I came straight to the city. I came straight, I moved into the property and prolonged, and I came straight here, found out what was the business, what had to be done, and my sister helped me and followed up the situation. A lot of things that we went through, we had to do our own work on. I have a lawyer that was helping me with this, uh, had to break down, and I, uh, just told my family that I was going to play, play for my mom's property, you know? So it's just...
Yes, very strong, because we're not lacking on anything, anything, anybody that's asked us to do, be done, but almost the next step, if not the next step, kind of thing. And it's very stressful when someone can sit in your face and say like, oh, well, you lost the bid! And without frustration, I'm like, oh, no, like, it's not gonna be that easy. I've been dealing, and, and you knew my, the person know my background. They were included on emails from China. So to tell me I lost the bid is a problem. To, to tell me to put in a bid for what I expect, you know, whatever I want, and I put a bid in and then you tell me I lost because somebody bid higher, I have a problem with that. I have a big problem with that. Some of the things you guys were saying tonight, I kind of agree with. There needs to be some kind of rating drawn when you, when you're selling or bidding on a property, how much you should be paying for this.
And I also, uh, you also, uh, the big, you try to...
Yeah, yeah, like, we lost the bid and I'm, and, and, and the number I put, I put out there, I've seen people buy four or five properties. I, like, what the heck? It's not fair, like, it's stressful. And I know there's other, you know, people out there going through the same thing I'm going through, but I just want to put it out here and let you guys know, like, something needs to be looked into.
Can you something, your information with Mr. Garcia?
You know, I...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Maria, forgive me with the last name, Shell, is that Stokie?
Starkey.
Starkey, thank you.
You're welcome.
She's the council.
I'm Mrs. Rose. I'm Maria Shell Starkey, retired truck police officer from the city of Trenton. I'm here behalf of our money that we have received for our grease. I was before you, and on October seventeen, thousand twenty-four, with the same, it's the same situation. We addressed Captain Cherry, Assistant DA, nobody had any answers. Maria Richardson said that she was going to get it done, get it taken care of. Nothing has gotten done. Officer Detective Mike Davis, all the officers behind me had retired. We have called the treasury, we've called pensions, talked to people. Nothing is received from the city with our funds. They do not have our money. So we have been promised that it would have been done in December. The funds would have been sent over, that was two thousand twenty-four. When I stood before you, you were the president that time, Councilwoman Feliciano. He had no answers. Assistant Cross, Assistant, uh, DA Captain Cherry. And sadly, Maria Richardson just became the DA at that time. So she had really no idea, so. Right now, we should have some answers. He's here today, there should be something that they know. Everybody we talked to, they say, no, we have no funds. We received our active, retroactive money two, almost two years ago. When we received that, the rest, they should have immediately went to pensions. It was never sent over. When we talked to Dwayne Twissdale from treasury who handles it, said that once they send the list over and the money, it can be done in three weeks. He's never heard anything, he didn't even have a list. We were told by Maria Richardson that it was done, but it's being worked on, it's being worked on, that's all we've heard for the last two years. It hasn't been worked on, just nothing's done. Everybody we spoke to, from pensions to treasury, I guess we gotta go to the agent, we put in complaints with the city and the state, I mean, how much work can we do? We want our money, we earned it, we worked, we were stuck across the street every day of our lives, we've earned that money, it's ours. Like I said last year, the state is so close. So maybe they can shed some light on it, we're sitting here, and maybe tell us where our money is, cause nobody seems to know. It's not my bank account, it's not one of these officers' bank accounts, well. So I have no idea where to go from here, okay? We've talked to PBA, cause we were active at the time, so they do have to represent us. Talked to Maria Richardson, he had worked on. The last council meeting we were here, being, uh, Detective, retired Detective Davis, she promised to show us proof that it was sent over. She showed us proof, okay? But it was, it was, well, it wasn't even, it was a fake, okay? The what she showed us was fifty-one thousand dollars for new officers. That was the check, that wasn't our check. Then she showed, then I called her office and I said, you have till the end of the day, I talked to John Sebel, I said, I'm going to an attorney, I'm gonna sue, our office owner, and I want an answer by the end of today. They faxed over to Officer Davis, a spreadsheet with like three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars on it, that was allegedly, it was in red, that means it wasn't paid in dollars, zeros. We have all these documentation. I wish I had for you today, I would be more happy to go to you, I had text message, I had emails from them, I had emails from treasury, emails from the, um, pension, said no funds, our money is not there, so where is it? Okay? We, nobody knows. But when we talked to Maria Richardson, Lucy Administrator, she said it's, it's being worked on. It's not being worked on because it's not done. We have the, the proof that it wasn't done. So we did get an answer from Dwayne Twissale that he was told, or he found out that, that nothing was sent over, but it's gonna be worked on, so it's being addressed. Mind you, it's been, uh, a year since I submitted to the council, and like I said, two years in total. He's been retired five years, I have three, this is four, my husband had traumatic brain injury, he was, he's four, so it's enough time. And from what he said, Dwayne Twissale, that it would be done in two weeks, three weeks tops, once he got the money and the list.
Thank you so much for sharing that, I'm starting to go through that, and hopefully someone from administration can help address this so that we can see where we are with it. I don't know if anyone would like to talk to you now or not.
Please, right here, if people would maybe shed some light on it.
Thank you.
Ms. Rose, uh, President, we're in Michael Cherry.
Good evening, Council President, Council Vice President, Council members. Thank you for all the, uh, very difficult work that you do. Uh, I just want to say upfront that I denounce any act that takes the life of an individual or individuals and separating them from their family or their loved ones. We should all condemn such acts strongly and loudly. What I want to add though, is that city council should not be either complicit or contributing to the martyrdom, loyalization... or contributing to the martyrdom, lionization, or celebration of an individual who was hateful, harmful, and hurtful. And I just want to read you, to you, a couple of statements from this individual. About black people, happening all the time in urban America, proud blacks go around for fun to go target white people. That's a fact, it's happening more and more. About black pilots, if I see a black pilot, I'm gonna be like, "Boy, I hope he's qualified." Black women, they're coming out, and they're saying, "I'm only here because of affirmative action." Yeah, we know, you do not have the brain processing power to otherwise be taken really seriously. You had to go steal a white person's slot to go and be taking someone seriously. Civil rights, we made a huge mistake when we passed the Civil Rights Act in the mid-sixties. Death penalty should be public, should be quick, should be televised. I think at a certain age, it's an initiation. At what age should you start to see public execution? Empathy, can't stand the word empathy. Actually, I think empathy is made up, new term that does a lot of damage. Gay people, you might want to crack open that Bible of yours in a lesser reference part of the same part of scripture, "Thou shall lay with another man, shall be stoned to death." Just saying. Great replacement theory. It's not a great replacement theory, it's a great replacement reality. Just this year, 3.6 million foreigners will invade America. 10 to 15 million will enter by the end of President's term, former President. Each will probably have three to five kids on average, while native-born Americans have 1.5. You're being replaced by design. Guns, it's worth, it's worth to have a cost of unfortunately some gun deaths every single year so that we can have the Second Amendment. Martin Luther King Jr. was awful, he's not a good person. He said one good thing, he actually didn't believe. Muslims, they aren't even hiding their intentions, Muslims plan to conquer Europe by demographic replacement. Will Europe wake up in time? Palestine, I don't think the place exists. Transgender people, you're an abomination to God. Those are the words of an individual that we as a city body, council, should not be complicit in or contributing to lionization, martyrdom, or celebration of. Thank you.
Uh, this name is in cursive and I can't read it, but it looks like a Jalen. The Jalen and Julie, is there a... Initials JB? Caroline Clark.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Trentonians. Caroline Clark, Riverside Drive, Trenton, New Jersey. So, I would like to first, like to thank Councilpeople Williams, Harrison, Frisbee, and Figaro. I want to thank you for disclosing the meeting, and I want to thank you for standing by your positions full-throatedly. To the other people who were involved in the secret meeting, uh, it was a secret meeting because it was not revealed prior to going. After the fact disclosure doesn't cure it. It was disrespectful to the other council members and the public to not have informed prior to the meeting with someone who came here, tried to usurp your power, tried to sell our order, and then to have meetings with him one-on-one, or three-on-one, I think was, um, I think it did not show a level of transparency that I think we are counting on from our council, who say that they don't support what he's pushing. So that said, you made a comment regarding Congress and the ad hoc committees. I'd like to know if, um, don't our council members have individual departments that they are liaisons to already? So, I'm not sure how that works, or that's different than an ad hoc committee. But in Congress, you mentioned you were from Congress, Councilwoman Edwards. Um, in Congress, we have a body there that represents different states. Here, you have one constituent, and it's Trentonians. So, we are not analogous to them in that regard. So, I would, I have another question. How is this report that DDP is offering to pay $3.9 million for? How do you know how much the report already costs? And if the state is paying $3.9 million for something, what are they getting in return? That cannot be independent. They've already made their positions clear that they want us to sell. So they're paying $3.9 million for a report to support that? Is that what's happening here? Okay. So with respect to the idea of creating an authority, so, how is it that you're gonna do an assessment of Trenton Water Works, and before that even happens, you are creating an authority? Okay. Creating an authority does not fix the problems at Trenton Water Works. It simply insulates them from public scrutiny. I have been in the government space for over 20 years, and if I don't know nothing else, I know when you want to decrease transparency, decrease accountability, and spend public money, you create authorities. So let's talk about the Trenton Parking Authority. You remember what happened with that, right? We just had a problem with Trenton, the parking authority folks there. Lack of transparency, misuse of funds. We can talk about the New Jersey School Development Authority. You know, you all remember the big scandal there, right? Then we can talk about the EDA, the Economic Development Authority, another scandal there. We can talk about New Jersey Turnpike. Anywhere that your revenues are going, we need to have elected people in charge of it. When you move it under an unelected body, you are going, it is a breeding ground for corruption. We already have corruption at Trenton Water Works. We don't need to move it from Trenton Water Works to Trenton Utility or Authority. The corruption is simply going to continue, except now, we can't hold you guys accountable. That's all that does. What is the difference? What is the difference between Trenton Water Works and Trenton Water Park? Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Vaughn.
Okay, Robin Vaughn, 1100 Stigerson Avenue. Um, I just wanted to say a couple of things, just as comments. I was concerned about the lead service line replacement to hear that there's a multimillion-dollar contract to do more replacements when from, from 2019 to 2021, you know, I save all my documents. It appears that Trenton Water Works, we allocated $48.7 million to replace 5,200 lead service lines, as Ms. Councilwoman Williams alluded to. Now, I would love to hear at some juncture from Mr. Siebel, you know, all those lead lines replacement for $51 million, what for, was it 5,200? Was that work done? That was under directors Dr. Shay, Stephen Pico, David Smith, and Mark Lavenberg. The three contractors that collected that money were allocated with South State Construction, Spinellio, Jazz Root, and Petro Gunlo. $50 million. They were all supposed to replace 5.2 million lines across Lawrence, Hamilton, city of Trenton, Ewing, uh, and yeah, from Phase 1 to Phase 2C. So, was that done, were those 5,200 replaced with that $50 million? So I don't understand why we have another $6.9 million, you know, I don't know what they're doing. But seems very suspect, and it should be investigated. And I just want to say, there's a lot of dishonest brokers around here. I think there should be a moratorium on these home sales. If you don't have a director, there's limited powers. There should be limited transactions going on in any city department if you don't have the rights of the appointed official there. Why are these transactions happening, DCA, if the interim director is still there? Everybody knows in government, anybody who's appointed to an interim position, they have limited power, they're not supposed to be spending money and transacting away assets. So, and I just wanted to say about the LLC thing, well, everybody knows what happened on 9/11. The reason why you cannot have an LLC and you don't have the individual name attached to it. Read the U.S. Patriot, the Bank Secrecy Act, know your client, know your customer. You can't walk into a bank today, you can't have an asset. You can have an LLC, but it has to have a name, an address, and you cannot have a post office box. So, and we shouldn't be concerned about all these properties, like Ms. Frisbee, Councilwoman Frisbee said. There's a lot of deed and title threat and fraud going on in cities like Trenton. So, DCA. So, and the other thing is that I wanted to touch on is the lawsuit. I was in court on September 18 with Mr. Bridges, who in my opinion, went on the record and violated attorney-client privilege. He went to the judge and submitted to the court that he knew that the council was gonna pass an ordinance to create an MUA and to create a regionalized entity. That's what he said, get the transcript. All the other attorneys, the judge asked, Judge Patrick Barrow, the Equity Court, asked the Hamilton attorney, the Lawrence attorney, attorney, Copey attorney, and our own attorneys, Mr. Wagenbach and Mr. Dowd. They're your attorneys. I don't know who Mike is, I don't know what Reed is talking about Mike. The executive has nothing to do with you guys, you're the board of directors of Trenton Water Works. Reed Gussior has no business meeting with you guys on our water utility. Tell them mine is business, and he's overstepping his authority. You're the board of directors, you legislate that authority. If you want anybody to come testify in front of you, you bring them forward. So it's this nonsense. So, um, yeah, I just, that's all I really had to say. But Wes Bridges said that you are having backdoor meetings, and you have already agreed to pay, to pass that ordinance. He told that to Judge Barrow. That should be investigated, and I will get you that transcript. So are you having backdoor meetings on ordinances?
It's more than that, it's your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Adina Best.
Adina Best, 615 South Clinton Avenue. My concern is, the post office, I'm some, like, some stuff, appears that everybody intended that. Regarding handicap door access, switch plates.
Could you bring the mic down a little bit more? Because I can't do it, yeah, we can't do it, there you go.
Adina Best, 615 South Clinton Avenue. My concern is, issue with the post office, I will settle the plates regarding that they need handicap door access, switch plates, because many times I go there, I'm constantly have the whole door for those that put the near chairs or just they was able to walk in dress freely. And it appears that I don't really respond to nobody. And I just spoke to the supervisor at the post office also, for me to store these handicap door access, switch plates, you know, the press on the side of the door, so it's gonna easily, who would have come to handle that issue in the post app?
Hi, good evening. Um, post office issues are federal issues. You would be able to contact the congressperson's office if you live in Trenton correctly. That would be Bonnie Motson Coleman. If you want to give her a call, her office, and they can, the case workers, their constitutional services representatives can help you file something with the post office to get your concern's address.
What's the name of the name sign?
Bonnie Motson Coleman. Do you have a paneling?
No.
Okay, so I'll write down the phone number and email.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam, Madam President, those are all the individuals I have listed for public comment. You can consider commenting.
Yes, thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, so, before we begin, I just want to say, I hope we can rectify what's going on with the police pensions, if there are any issues that should have been sorted out, handled by now. Um, also, I appreciate Mr. Compton Cherry's comments tonight, I know a lot of folks feel that way, and I appreciate that he spoke publicly. So, I just have maybe some announcements and thought at the end. So, this coming October 15, Wednesday, will be the North Ward System Police Advisory Council meeting at Galley Baptist Church, 4:40 M.O.K. Our special guest would be Trenton Police Lieutenant John Harvard from Patrol Administration, who will be demonstrating how to administer Narcan to save someone if they're having an overdose incident. So if you'd like to learn about that, we're also hoping to have enough Narcan for everyone to take them, in case they do come across someone in distress. You can save a life and give someone a chance to come back and get healthy. But they only get that chance if they get saved the first time. Um, also, there's a need, a terrible need for school crossing guards across our city, and we need to get more to be hired as soon as possible. So there's a big effort from the police department to try to hire more crossing guards. The pay is $23 per hour. Um, so if you can, and you're interested, please apply at www.trenton nj.org/jobs. Again, trentonnj.org/jobs. Under the heading for police, you'll see crossing guards. Uh, this coming Saturday, October 11, there's a lead awareness cookout from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Sunny Hill Rean Park, at North Clinton and Fillmore Street. There'll be games, food, giveaways, lead testing for everybody to be tested, and it's important to be tested. Music and food provided by Amanda's Lakewood Cuisine, and sponsors are the city of Trenton Health and Human Services Department, as well as East Trenton Collaborative. On, also, the same day, I'm sorry, on Wednesday, October 15, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., there'll be free flu vaccines available at UCD Square Park. I believe it's provided by Arm and Arm and Task. So if anyone needs a flu shot, please send it to UCD Park on Wednesday, October 15, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. And then, this coming Saturday night, is a great party occasion, it's called "Can't Get Enough of the 2000s." Uh, so I'm sure we'll hear Macarena and a bunch of other songs and do some dance.
So I'm sure we'll hear Macarena and a bunch of other songs and do some dancing. That's more Councilwoman Edwards' department, she could explain probably. But that's going to be at the department, I'm sorry, at Coward Park from five PM to eight PM, and that is sponsored by the great City of Trenton Department of Recreation. And so just thoughts I wanted to share. I was recently contacted about the wine building over on Academy Street. It's really getting terrible again with break-ins, it's not being secure, a lot of drug use, people in need of services. So I'm really hoping that we can get the City of Trent, work with TDA, because TDA reached out, they're a Trenton Downtown Association, very concerned about it, to see what can be done to secure the property, get people who are living there, appropriate services to help themselves, and make sure that the building's secure, hopefully for future development, before maybe a fire occurs in the winter time. Also, one said the DCA is not here tonight. They've heard from everybody and they heard from this council, we need help in raising these salaries for Trenton Water Works. We need to hire the best and the greatest, and that's only going to happen if we're allowed to raise the salaries for the people who work there, for all the unfilled positions that are getting filled, as was said in the famous movie You Have the Battle. As far as some thank yous, I want to thank Public Works Department for making their way around the city, finding it to the North Ward. It was very great to see that Ohio Avenue and Indiana Avenue are being paved this week in addition to Willow Street and Barber Street, which was terrible for a long time. So thank you very much for doing that. And just want to close with the thought that we're in very, very difficult times. We know we go on social media and see a lot of things, particularly when it comes to ICE raids and things that the government is doing that is not necessarily in our name, but we can't give up. We must have voices, we must vote, we have an election coming up, we also must speak out.
Councilwoman, that is your time.
God bless and have a great week.
Thank you. Councilwoman President?
Thank you, Madam President. So I wanted to address real quickly some of the comments. I missed some of them, but I do want to say hatred, one, I'm agreeing with Merkel Cherry, has no place in our society and especially not in our city. It should not be reported on any level. Second, I do want to acknowledge the issue, and I don't know all the details of it, but our police pensions. As they have showed up for us day in and day out, we ought to show up for them. They ought to get, they deserve to get their money, and they should not have to come and fight. And this is something that we are, it's becoming a pattern for us, and we've got to do better. Just like we need to receive our pay every week or biweekly, they, the exact same way, and it should not be that they have to show up week after week and be taken on the back. I just have a problem with that. When it comes to, um, might actually go past that. I watered apartment, I've set my piece on that. I stand where I stand. I do agree that we should have known about the meeting. I don't believe that it was something that was done in collusion to keep something for us. I think it is a misjudgment that was made when we were not made known, when there are meetings that are happening on such a large level. All of council should be informed, even if all of council cannot be present. We, this is breast cancer awareness month, and I ask those of you women, you know who you are, you should be getting mammograms, you should please go, early detection will can save lives. This is from me, West Ward, my West Ward Community Conversations, which are usually the second Tuesday of the month. This month, because of so much that is going on, is going to be held on October the second, I'm sorry, October thirteenth, which is actually a Monday, next Monday. Same location, six hundred Artisan at five thirty at the Trenton West Ward Substation. Their flyer will be posted this evening, but for those who generally come out, I ask that you would come out. I want to thank also our colleague, Fire Director, again, for coming out and doing that demonstration. We got a lot of great responses to that, and I've heard that my colleagues are going to be doing, some of them are going to be doing the same thing in their meetings. I think it is something that we all need to be better informed about. I believe the city needs to have better compassion. I know that we have rules, I know that there are regulations, but when it comes to our residents, we are here to protect our residents. We have got to do better. Just because we can do something does not mean that we should do it. And I believe, I'm going to go back to this with the houses, again, we've got to show up better for our residents. What we don't know, we just don't know, but we need to help educate our communities so that we can retain these properties here. There's a lot going on, and again, with the LLCs, people coming in, I know that they're giving new names just so they can get up the properties here, add a ridiculous miniscue bid. We have got to do better with identifying these people, getting these bad landlords out of our city and protecting our, our, our treasures, which are our property here, and again, our water works. With that, I believe I am really done. I want to, let's see, oh, no. West Ward, there's the Citywide Cleanup. We just had the one October fourth for the North Ward. This week, this Saturday, is the West Ward Cleanup, October eleventh. Please, West Ward, put all of your recycling out as soon as possible. The list is on the city website if you want to see what you can put out. South Ward is October eighteenth, and the East Ward is October twenty-fifth. With that, I want to read a portion of the city's mission statement, which is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility, to seek excellence in the city's operations, and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. I take this, I take my job very seriously. I thank everyone for coming out this evening, and I pray that everybody gets in, gets to their home respectfully, safely. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman. Councilwoman, please, Anna.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for those that spoke up and expressed your feelings and views on various different things that were presented to us. Your voices always matter. This job is not easy. Never said that it was, never came into it thinking that it would be. Excuse me. We have to make very hard decisions, and we try to make the right decisions. I think I can say that for all of us up here. It's never been looked at to try to do anything to miss that, but we're not a perfect people, and I'm not a perfect person, nor do I claim to be. But I am trained. I've tried to govern myself accordingly when dealing with my colleagues, being respectful, and always looking out for the good of us as a unit, because we do move as a unit, even though we serve in our individual capacities. Sometimes things just happen, and it's not meant to be malicious or anything, it just happens. And so, yeah, we went to the, the, the meeting, I was invited, again, I'm going to say it one last time, very briefly, by CVP to show up. It was her individual meeting, so could have been looked at a different way, it could have been looked at a different way, but it was not taken that way, and nothing was done, again, by myself, or Council Vice President, or Council President, to be sneaky or malicious or anything like that. That is, that is farthest from the truth. No one's here to look to get rid of Trenton Water Works. And when we talk about the authority or the thought thereof or the possibility, it's just to tell you what we're thinking of, it's just something, look, maybe this, maybe it works, maybe it doesn't, maybe you want it, maybe you don't, maybe we can have it, maybe we can't, but we know that we don't want to get rid of Trenton Water Works, and we know that we don't want to regionalize it and then just take it from Trenton altogether. So we're just thinking of what it can be. However this turns out, I pray that it's for the betterment and the good of the city. I hope that in the end, the right decisions are made, but I can tell you that no decision has been made. I can say that no decision has been made either way on what it is. That's why there was a resolution of support to say, we could look in this direction, we're thinking this way. That is all that is to say. People, oh, you're sitting on your head, you're not doing anything. That is, that's not true. That's not true. I ask, I ask that you all give us a little bit of grace and a whole lot of prayer. That's what I'm asking for, because it's not easy, and we don't want to mess this up. And that ain't even political, that's just for the people. I don't want to mess this up. I don't want to get this wrong. I don't want to put my neck out there and then I get slapped in the face behind it because we moved in a direction that actually hurt and didn't help. I don't think any of us want that. So with that being said, again, I thank you all for your comments, I thank you for your feelings, I thank you all for showing up, thank you for showing up, and for holding our feet to the fire about things as well. You got to have thick skin to sit and do this thing. Y'all have equipped me and some of us very well. I thank you for that. I, I can move with great precision and, and little emotion. I care, but you toughen me up. And I thank you for that, because the fights that we have, that you don't see, require that, that character or that being when we do talk and go back and forth about stuff. The housing thing, it is a concern, it's been a concern, right? The way that these LLCs come, it's been a concern. There's a lot of things that we're concerned about, that we're holding administrators' feet to the fire about. I need you to know that nobody is turning a blind eye or a deaf ear to anything, and we do do the best that we can to work for all of you and the betterment of our city. Thank you again for coming out, and I pray that you have traveling nurses going on. And I ask that those of you that pray, that you just pray for the council, and pray with us, pray for our wherewithal as we continue forward. Thank you.
Councilwoman Phil Rowe Kattonburg, if you don't mind, I want to go first, and Council VP is going to close out for me.
Okay.
So really quickly, thank you, everyone, for being present, and for those who shared their comments, concerns, and, excuse me, and being with us, sharing your thoughts and opinions. Really quickly, as far as the retirement, I really, really hope that that does come, that we have a solution for them soon. I know how it feels to kind of wait on the thing that you, that pay that you've earned, so I hope that that will get resolved very soon. Ms. Athena, I know that Council Vice President explained to you the steps to take with the federal buildings, and thank you, Mr. Cherry, for sharing your comments. To everyone else about the water department, Councilwoman Felicia, let me apologize, I didn't mean to cut you off in the middle of being disrespectful, it was just, get it out. You said it very well. This was definitely a meeting that was, you know, arranged by the mayor and CVP, so it was kind of their meeting, and we were invited to. I did ask clarity on how did the meeting come about and things like that, and I wanted to be present. I wasn't going to be present, let me be clear with that. I wasn't going to, because it was doing work hours, but I decided to go with the notion of being present and understanding what was going on and what was going to be said. So to that point, that is the reason why I attended. I don't know, maybe looking hindsight, I should have told everyone before. It wasn't my meeting, and I apologize if everyone feels like I should have. I'm not perfect, and I will make mistakes, so maybe I should have said it prior to the meeting taking place, or maybe it should have came from those organizing. I don't know, but maybe I battle with that, but at the end of the day, it was nothing that I did intentionally to disregard any of my council members once the meeting was had. It was a late day, so I did speak since I was on the phone with Councilman Harrison until about eleven o'clock, eleven thirty that night, talking about the meeting. So it wasn't that, I wasn't trying to inform everyone. I did inform him late that evening, and then, of course, later on today, I spoke to some of our, to the rest of council and gave them a briefing as to what occurred, because I didn't want anyone to think it was something that we were trying to hide, and I was going to address it publicly after we got through the ADHOP resolution. Just to put that out there, there's nothing that I'm trying to keep as a secret. Everything that we do, we try to do in the best interest of the city, and I stand firmly on, I don't agree with anything regionalization at all, whether it's authority or not. I don't think we're at that point yet, and that's just me, my personal opinion. I don't want to see anything that has to do with other people coming and trying to take or have any part in this Trenton Water Department. And I'm just going to leave it right there. Thank you all for being here this evening. I do want to run, go take some medicine a little bit. Thank you, CVP.
Councilwoman Phil Rowe Kattonburg?
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Again, I apologize for not being present, myself and my son are under the weather tonight. I just a really quick couple of things. I want to thank again Parks and Recreation Interim Director, Paul Harris, for his work in the Chestnut Park, Catcomb Park, you know, for allowing me to have a meeting, having a meeting with me, and having the community address as to what we want done with that property, and also for Foundation Academy for being a part of that and a partnership with that, so that we can, you know, get that park up to standards for the community, for the safety of our children. I really want to thank them. I don't know if Director Minnick Appelli is in the audience tonight, but I just want to thank him for two issues that were had over the last few days involving a dog being adopted, and also kittens that were surrendered to the shelter. I want to thank him so much for his efforts, for getting the things done, and he get done in order, and I hope that, you know, moving forward, we can get the shelter running in accordance how it should be running, and, you know, hoping to hit the ground running with the breeding ordinance moving forward. Other than that, I also wanted to speak to the Tyson family who came and spoke. Again, this is my issue with the ordinances involving property sales. You know, I don't feel like anybody should be asked, what do you want to pay for a property? What do you want to give for a property? I feel like we should be having market value, notifying market value of these properties, and, you know, having that market value, and then, you know, whatever the bid is, whatever comes closest to market value, you know, should be the winning bid on some of these properties. Again, I just wanted to be rhyme or reason. You know, the Order twenty-five, one twenty-three, those are all South Ward properties, Benedict Street, Jersey Street, those are properties that need to be purchased, that I would love to be purchased, purchased and rehacked. Again, but these are all LLCs, there's so much uncertainty when it comes to properties being put out there and sold to and purchased by LLCs, unfortunately. Moving forward, I just want to say, South Ward Cleanup, again, it's our second annual. We always do such a great job with South Ward, February, October eighteen, twenty twenty-five, and our next South Ward CPAC will be on December, October twenty-second, St. Bartolome Church at seventeen forty-six South Clinton Avenue. Please come out, of course, you're concerned, continue doing what you're doing, be blessed. Thank you, guys, for being there again. My colleagues for not being present, and you all have a wonderful evening.
Lastly, myself. Good evening, everyone. This was definitely an eventful meeting. I want to say thank you to everyone that came out. I'm sorry to hear about some of the issues that some of the residents are dealing with with the properties, and just to say to the siblings that came in here that are residing in their late mother's former property that she owned already, send off an email and CC the rest of council so we can all be able to know what exactly is going on. And on that note, revisiting the formally requesting from the Chief of Staff, Mr. Beach, as he said earlier, to start the ADHOP committees again for HEB. And I would like for us to, and Councilwoman Felicia and, and Williams, for us to review these property sales before they come onto the docket, and of course, including LLC ownership verification, that's definitely a good one. So hopefully we'll see some progress, but that is some improvement going forward, considering everything that Councilwoman Phil Rowe Kattonburg has expressed her very valid concern about it for us. To the retired police officers, I'm so sorry you guys have to keep coming in here and... To the retired police officers, I'm so sorry you guys have to keep coming in here and I promise you, this council is doing their due diligence and following up with the administration and making sure that your pension increases and as well as the back pay will be paid out to the state so it can be sent to you. I want to talk about Trenton Water Works and close my comments out on that note. The ADHOP committee, I'm very taken aback by some of the aggression here today, but some of the concerns, I understand everyone's point of view and perspective, but I understand that there are room for, there is room for improvement for me with communication. I did not think that I needed to tell the entire council that I had requested a meeting from, with the DDP Commissioner because we are individual council members, though we are a collective. No decision would be made without the collective. However, we all have the prerogative to have meetings with whomever we need to for our own educational purposes so that we can make a decision with the collective body. Now, when I asked for that meeting and the Commissioner offered to join meetings with the mayor, I did oblige and I did get asked for my advice on whether other council members or council should be attending a meeting and I said, I would definitely prefer that and I would, and I recommended the two for the reasons I mentioned earlier. There was no intent to disregard anyone else. There was no intent to represent this entire council body as a whole at the meeting. The meeting was purely educational purposes and just, and for the sake of time and for us to be on the same page, he included the mayor. Now, that was his choice. I accepted that for a joint meeting. Again, this was not an ADHOP committee meeting. An ADHOP committee was not formed, was not decided, was, this is not solid or set in stone. I reintroduce to the ADHOP committee resolution that I introduced at the beginning of the year that I attended to a month ago as well, for us to address these issues. It's not like a divide conquer kind of thing, but the purpose of committees is to, to move progress along a little quicker so that we don't have to always have a quorum and have to have special meetings and have to go through the whole entire long process of this. Now, I understand from a different standpoint where that could be seen as the rest of council is excluded, but that was never my intention and I want to apologize for anything, any inconvenience, any type of misperception or any ill feelings that I may have created in this process that, and originally, the meeting was supposed to be tomorrow. I planned to tell council, but it happened so quickly with the change that I did not have time to. Now, I felt like having a meeting yesterday and having a meeting today would have been good for us to at least be able to come back to council with what we had a conversation about and catch you all up together.
Madam Vice President, that is your time.
Okay, I'll finish out in ten seconds, but I definitely fully intended to have the conversation today. It was never a secret meeting, it was never something that you were never going to know about. So whether, because I didn't have time to call, I'm in class, I'm at work, it's just, I'm on the work, so forgive me, I'm asking for grace, I'm asking for forgiveness, but moving forward, I would do my due diligence to make sure this council is fully informed. Even when I sent an email, I will CC you all so that there are no type of misperceptions of any nefarious or frivolous or sneaky dealings. And on that note, have a good night. I hope that we can continue to move this city forward collectively and on a good foot. Have a good evening. Mr. Garcia?
Yes, Madam Vice President, there's one as for motion two, but sure.
Motion to adjourn. Move in ten seconds.
Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano? Councilwoman Phil Kenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilperson, oh, excuse me, Councilperson Gonzalez, the second, motion carried, meeting adjourned.